Well, good evening, welcome. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And we're fortunate enough to have this evening with us, the Washoe County Planning Commission. So, welcome Washoe County Planning Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, to our Thursday, April 26th edition. And if I could have Commissioner Marshall lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, since you're here.
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you very much. Michelle, can I get roll call for the Reno City Planning Commission?
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Britton Griffith?
Present.
Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Paul Levis?
Here.
John Marshall?
Here.
Kevin Weiskie?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
We have a quorum for Reno.
And then if I could get a roll call for Washoe County Commission.
Okay. Larry Chesney?
Here.
James Barnes?
Here.
Thomas Bruce?
Here.
Francine Donchick?
Here.
Is that right? Philip Perrin?
Present.
Michael Lawson?
Present.
And Sarah Sevilichek?
Here. And we have a quorum for Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number three, which is public comment. This item is for either public comments on any action item or for any general public comment. And just a reminder, if you wish to make a comment this evening, please fill out one of these salmon color request to speak forms that Michelle has over here. When you get to the microphone, please state your name for the record. I'll disclose that I am not great at pronouncing names, I'll tell you that right now. If I get it wrong, please say it right at the microphone. And everyone will have three minutes, once you get up there. And the first request to speak form I have is from Michael Welling, please, followed by Denise Ross.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to have some time to speak. I just, prior to everything getting started tonight, I wanted to remind you about what took place a week ago in the city planning, which was, you guys had the moratorium word come up from city council with Councilman Burke Bigler. And she mentioned that because of the things that are going on, and the amount of growth that's going on in the North Valleys right now, that we definitely have some problems. On top of that, the Silver Dollar project came before you. And in that, you guys postponed that again pending studies from planning again because they don't know how much water and how much availability of resources they have there. They had to do new measurements. Tonight, you have a project that comes in front of you again in the North Valleys, and I don't think it's a project at this time that we can go ahead and honestly look at and give it an amendment change for what they want to do as far as their rezoning goes. I understand that they're asking to go into the city and whatever you guys decide to do with that. But as far as the amendment for the parcels and the other things there, based on last week, you guys are gonna have to wait, as you guys decided last week, on that Silver Dollar project, you're gonna have to wait, because we don't know how much water we have, we don't know how much waste we can get rid of, we don't know how much injection. Lastly, I want to mention that they're injecting water on the airport into the ground, and the key words here is that we don't know where it's going. I'd like somebody to look into this in the city. I'd like them to look into it now, because I'm on a well adjacent to that airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Ross, followed by Carlos Archuleta?
This Denise Ross for Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. Hearing words, body at Washoe County lands bill. The water's still here, we're still here. Okay, this is for the city of Reno. This photo is property that's been annexed by the city of Reno, under the assumption city of Reno will give them the zoning changes they want and allow them to build in this FEMA flood zone for almost two years now. This would be irresponsible, legally questionable, and a major lack of morality, if you grant Washoe County, this photo is of the area in which you just approved, and we appealed with no success. How could the two commissioners that represent this area approve such a project that staff violated NRS, NAC, master plan, and Washoe County code? I, Tammy Holt Still, well, it's her, request that you dismiss yourselves from the commission and representing our valley. Now, it's me. Yesterday, the city approved increasing the Reno Sted water reclamation facility from 2 million gallons a day to 4 million gallons a day. I heard John Flansburgh say it's gonna be close in regards to meeting the build-out schedules. I also heard Mr. Flansburgh say, yes, there is a lot to consider. I heard Mr. Paul McKenzie say, we can't shut down development. If not now, then when? I have a paper... I guess. Well, I'll leave it for you guys. That lists all of the new... Sorry. That lists all of the new apartments and housing developments, the new warehouses. There's one warehouse in there that has 1,632 square feet. If you do the calculations, that one facility will dispose of 26,112 gallons per day into wastewater. Where's all that gonna go? We need you all to act now. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Archuleta, followed by Russ Earl?
Thank you. I come before you today to speak against the building in North Valleys. The infrastructure is not there or in place to hold the projects that they're gonna approve. I live on Estates Road, and the amount of traffic that's gonna hit Estates Road is gonna be unbearable, especially with school there. Now, they're saying on top of the hill, Lemon Valley, they're going to allow them to come down to Estates Road. You got the Golden Mesa Development, and then on top, that Lemon Valley. Estates is a road, it's not a highway. And you say you give a free right turn? That ain't gonna do no good. How you gonna get on the freeway? And I've talked to the governor, and it don't look like that freeway is gonna be done for about 19, 20 years. Now, the developer in Cold Springs is paying to help alleviate some of the financial costs on that. Is the Golden Valley, Golden Mesa, paying? No. And I wanna know why all the outlets on Estates Road, and there's none on Golden Valley Drive. You created an unsafe environment, not only for me, but for all them high school kids and all the families that live on Estates Road. Nobody has ever contacted me, and I've invited you guys to come over, and I'll buy you lunch, and sit there and watch the traffic. And I urge you, before you pass anymore, you make sure that infrastructure can handle it, 'cause come election time, I'll guarantee you, the people that appointed you will be held accountable. And I know you guys say, oh, the engineers this, engineers that, well, let me tell you something, engineers can break the rules too. And I hope you understand that when the time comes, you stand up and say, I did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ Earl, followed by Tracy Hall, please.
Good evening. My name is Russ Earl. I am the president of the Silver Knolls Community Organization and a retired professional firefighter from the city of Oakland. A couple of the things I want to bring up here, you all know, sewer effluent. You can increase your capacity of any of your treatment plants to as much as you want. Our problem is, where do we put the effluent? We're in closed basins. We don't have the luxury, like they do downtown, of being able to put this water into the Truckee River. Swan Lake, Silver Lake, and Cold Lake are all at pretty much maximum capacity now. We had one very wet year and one less than average year. What happens if you start adding... We just have one development that's out in the Silver Knolls area being considered. That, in my estimation, or calculations, would put 1 and 1/4 million gallons with the 2,300 homes they want to build. We don't have that capacity. Other things to look into, we have traffic. We have local and state traffic issues. Red Rock Road, North Virginia, all that, they can't handle any more traffic than we already have. We need a concrete plan from NDOT as to what their improvement plan is going to be for widening the road and improving the spaghetti bowl. We already have, it's taken me some mornings, an hour and 15 minutes to make it from Red Rock to the spaghetti bowl with no accidents, just because it's raining. It's only gonna get worse. One thing that not too many people have talked about or even considered, and Commissioner Chesney has been the only one that has really reached out about this, is fire. I worked in the city that had the dubious distinction of previously having lost the most number of homes in a wildfire, 3,200, until we had the Tubbs Fire down in Santa Rosa. That area in Santa Rosa was on CAL FIRE maps as an area deemed to be unburnable, because it was so far from the wild interface. A lot of our current projects on Peavine, which is gonna be near the Eschiavera project, and the ones out in the county, are right on the wild interface. You have the possibility in a wind-driven fire of the embers going more than two miles. That's the problem they had with the Tubbs Fire and with Coffee Park. Those houses had a high density of, well, what we would consider medium density, because that's an average of three per acre, but with areas and pockets of as many as 10 per acre. The houses are so close that the radiant heat, once a, one structure gets going, the radiant heat automatically ignites the next structure over. We need to keep with the low-density housing of one unit per acre, so that it gives our local fire resources a defensible chance of stopping a wildfire. We just had a large wildfire on July 14th out in Silver Knolls last year, and due to having five jet air tankers at Sted that day because of the Long Valley Fire, that's the only thing that saved Silver Knolls. So, in closing, I would also say the M-word, a temporary moratorium until we can work out all of the issues that we have. Growth is inevitable, I understand that. It needs to be responsible and well-planned growth. That's what I would ask all of you folks to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy Hall, followed by Danny Cleas, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Hall, for the record. I have a home out in Lemon Valley that I haven't lived in for over a year. My 10 acres is still flooded, and it started to dry out until that property over where Prada Development started getting pumped dry, which doesn't make any sense to any of us, 'cause common sense here, you're pumping a dry piece, or this property right here, which no homes are on, you're pumping that water back into Swan Lake, guess what? Into people's homes that are already there. How does that seem fair? It's absolutely not fair. I need you guys to understand, the people that live out in Lemon Valley, okay? We're teachers, we're business owners, we're doctors, we're attorneys, we're millennials that want to own land. We're people out there that are raising animals. We have horses, cows, pigs, chickens. We moved out there so we could have acreage. That's being taken away. We are people that like to ride our horses, go out in off-road vehicles. You guys are gonna take that away from us as well. I am being told, my house was just re-tagged after a year. I cannot go home. That's really, really pathetic. The county has been gracious enough to find assistance for us to be in temporary housing. Temporary shouldn't be over a year. Now, we're being told that's cut off at June. Where are we gonna go? Our house was just re-tagged. So, before you guys allow any more development to go on out there, you need to fix the problem that's been there for over a year in everybody's faces. You guys just can walk away from it? We're living it. We're living it. My horse has been boarded, that cost me extra money, okay? Is that fair? Does that seem fair? Because I'm thinking that it's not. I think that the city should come up with some kind of plan to help those of us that are still not in our homes, to keep our temporary housing till something's fixed out there. Where are we gonna go? Where do you guys want us to go? We are business owners. We apply, or we supply jobs for people in this town. We're commercial business people, we have property downtown, we pay our taxes on our flood properties still. How is it fair that we can't live there? It's not. I bet you, you guys are paying taxes for a house you get to live in. Our home was paid for. We have to start over? We're middle-aged. We're grandparents. We want to be able to enjoy our lives. And now, we're being told we have to move on? For what? I mean, it just doesn't seem right. I think you guys need to take a look at a fix out there before you allow any more development. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Cleas, please, followed by Cheryl Lynn Barney. And if I could ask the audience to hold the applause, please, to be respectful of all the speakers and the decorum, I would appreciate that. Danny, please.
Danny Cleas, for the record, most of you guys know me. I'm here every week. The county will get to know me a lot better, because there's a lot more on the county's plate. We're all tired of it. Washoe County actually has a master plan for the North Valleys, and Lemon Valley especially. Lot of rural area out there. It is made to keep rural area character. Washoe County just approved Lemon Valley Heights. That doesn't keep that character. They also approved it by not even making all the findings. Never had a fire report. It's not fair. We know what the city of Reno does, I'm here every week, that they're here. We talk every week. They actually are looking at different ways to slow down the growth out there, which I appreciate. We went to the workshop. Freeways, fire, police, everything. It's just not the sewer system. Storm runoff, everybody knows, retention, detention ponds do not work. Yes, they slow down the flow, but they do not slow down the volume of water. Right now, there's a project going down the center of Lemon Valley Drive. What a mess that is. Made the center ditch three times as big as what it is. That means, that water is gonna go into that lake three times faster. All these warehouses being built, that is the number-one factor, because they take up the most space. We get more runoff from those warehouses across the highway from us than anywhere else. And it sluices right down to there. Prada Ranch is the next one. That's the city of Reno's project, because they annexed it. The developer wants to put in warehouses and high-density housing. Again, doesn't fit the rural lifestyle. It should not even be considered. Right now, it can't be considered because of the water in there, but in the future, it doesn't need to be there. For the two commissioners that represent the North Valleys, go back and look at the master plan, please. Keep our area the way it should be. We do not need high-density housing in there whatsoever. We moved out there for a reason. Same with Silver Knolls, same with the people in Cold Springs. Quit forcing the city in our faces, like Reno and Sparks did years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Cheryl Lynn Barney, please, followed by Frank Benedict.
Oh.
Okay, we'll do it the other way around.
Okay. I'm Frank Benedict. I'm sorry I got up here first.
That's all right.
I wanted to talk about the road that runs from Sun Valley to 395 Golden Valley Road. It's way too narrow because of the dirt trucks, and there's a pit up there, there's doubles and triples that go over that every day, also the school busing and the residential traffic. And before anything should be done out there, there's a lot of traffic, you know, from the residential, the people that are living there now, that road should be widened, because it's, it should have been, they should have widened it when they built the school, and they didn't. And it needs to be widened before they build any more out there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Cheryl Lynn, now you're up.
Just the mic. My name's Cheryl Lynn Barney, and I live in the back of Lemon Valley, not far from the airport, and I haven't been to many of these meetings, but I used to be somewhat active in politics, and I discovered that going to meetings doesn't usually have a lot of impact. So, I'm hoping you guys are listening today. I'm a retired teacher. I have been living in Lemon Valley since 1974. Our home has been paid for for many years. When we made our retirement planning, that was one of the things we counted on. Now that the water has actually been in the corner of my yard, fortunately, I was not displaced, but I was that close to being displaced. Now that it's been in the corner of my yard, I'm not sure how secure my future is as a retiree. I don't know what's coming. It seems just common logic, if you keep pouring water, 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 and that basin is closed, it's just gonna come up. We'll have some dry years, it'll go down some, but with additional water, the numbers just don't add up. The one thing, speaking of water, that I wanted to talk about was water quality. I'm very concerned about this, I'm sure you've had studies done, but basically, Swan Lake is a giant sewer pond. The solution to pollution is dilution, but how much can you dilute it? Over years and years and years of piling it in there, and it's a closed basin, it's not going anywhere? I don't drink the water, and I have the city water tamewa, and I know they do tests on it, but I don't drink it anymore. I buy water, because I don't trust it. It does, it either tastes kind of brackish, or it tastes chlorinated. Sometimes the smell is, the chlorine's so strong. And this is only gonna get worse, as we have more development there. So, you're really messing with a lot of people's lives, even the ones who haven't been inundated, are still dealing with the effects of this increase of water in our basin. To me, the only solution that seems to be there is dredging, and I know it's been rejected as being expensive, and what will we do with the dirt we take out? How about just making a big pile somewhere? How about spreading it around the edge somewhere? But make it deeper, you wouldn't have to displace anyone, you wouldn't have to buy anybody out, you wouldn't have to do any, just make it deeper so more water can go in there. That would keep it out of people's homes, it still wouldn't take care of the sewer problem, though. If you have looked at Google Earth and looked down at Swan Lake, it has the usual color of a desert lake, kind of a light olive green, but where the treated effluent comes into the lake, it looks like there's this giant splotch of dark brown, blackish mold growing on the land there. And that's where, also, if you look at, down at the Truckee River, where the East Sparks Treatment Plant dumps into it, the water turns from river color to brown, right where the water comes in from the sewer plant. That's what's happening to our valley. Luckily, as someone mentioned earlier, the river has constant water flow, and it does whatever it does out at Pyramid Lake, if it ever gets there. But we live in this little tiny bowl, and it's just accumulating, and I'm wondering if maybe somewhere down the road, there may be some birth defects, some cancers, some things that you might be making yourselves liable for by not having completely checked into what this awful water and the increased amounts of pollution building up over the years will do to us out there. So, I hope you'll consider that in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment at this juncture on item number three? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to our public hearings. And our first item on the agenda under public hearings is item 4.1, and this is case number LDC 18-00026, United Federal Credit Union MPa. And what we will do is begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative. We'll turn it over to staff for a presentation, and then the commission will have a chance to discuss it. Turn it over to applicant's representative. Welcome.
Thank you, Stacy Huggins, for the records, with Wood Rogers, representing the United Federal Credit Union Master Plan Amendment. Very quickly, this project consists of two parcels located on Lemon Drive, directly north of Lemon Drive and the Sky Vista Parkway intersection. It's about three and a half acres total of the two parcels. As you can see here a little bit, these two parcels were originally impacted with a road that crosses here to access the Walgreens. You might help you be familiar with that site. Currently, these parcels are identified under the city of Reno zoning as having a split zoning. The front third, if you will, is arterial commercial. The middle section is LLR 1, and the upper section, upper third, is LLR 2 and 1/2. Those LLR designations are residential in nature. So, I'm going to show you why the master plan amendment is being requested ultimately. Arterial commercial zoning is appropriate adjacent to arterials and collectors such as Lemon Drive and Sky Vista. Unfortunately, the zoning that you see here is not in conformance with the underlying land use master plan that's identified in the Reno Sted corridor joint plan. This map represents the land use that's identified for these parcels within the Reno Sted corridor joint plan. As you can see, the, a portion of these parcels is designated low-density suburban, with some open space on the upper portion of the north parcel. The purpose of the master plan amendment, as I mentioned before, is to bring these properties more into conformance with the zoning that I showed previously. The change would take away the low-density suburban and replace it with general commercial that would be consistent with the zoning designation of arterial commercial. And then, it would also modify the open space designation that exists currently. The open space on these parcels currently follows down, and it makes a little bit of a semicircle on these two parcels. We have proposed to modify the open space to actually match the LLR 2 and 1/2 zoning line. As a result of matching the LLR 2 and 1/2 zoning line, the open space has been reduced slightly, but we have still preserved the steep slopes on this site, and believe that it still meets the intent of the open space that is identified in the Reno Sted corridor plan. Just to quickly summarize, so the change of the master plan amendment would result in 2.73 acres of general commercial and 0.86 acres of open space if this change is approved. So, just to show you a comparison of the existing and the proposed, again, the existing on the left, the open space that you see here is being modified to be more in line with the topography and the current zoning boundary of the LLR 2 and 1/2, which is reflected over here, increasing the general commercial land use designation, but also bringing the site much more into conformance with the current existing zoning that is found on this parcel as AC. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. We will get back to you on the questions. At this point, we'll turn it over to staff. And a presentation... Okay, thank you. We will get back to you on the questions. At this point, we'll turn it over to staff. And a presentation from Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner, for the record. So Stacy did a great job highlighting the general request. If I could get the overhead, Michelle. One key feature about this is the existing area that's surrounding the property now already has zoning of commercial on a number of different areas. So this would be consistent with that arterial commercial zoning not only existing on the site now, but the surrounding areas. The properties located to the west are all within a PUD that has an underlying designation of commercial. The properties to the south is already developed as a commercial use. In addition to that, the property to the north has commercial zoning. And directly to the east, across Lemon Drive, has commercial zoning as well. So this would just be consistent with everything around it. The notable aspect of this with the open spaces, this would allow us to go through with the zone change in the future to designate this property as an open space zoning designation. So it'd help us get that protection on those slopes, which is consistent with the Reno-Stud Corridor Joint Plan policy, PSF 1.1, which says restrict development on steep slopes, rock-out croppings, plias, drainage ways, and wetlands. And so by designating this portion as open space, it will protect that so that no development can occur on that portion of the site. This would also create an area for a developable parcel. As you saw the overhead that Stacy provided, there is an existing road, access road that comes up through there, which does limit some of the development that happens. So there is some area now that would be able to be developed on that property. So with that, I'm available for any questions, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing item. Before we get to public comment, I am going to ask the Reno City Planning Commissioners for disclosures, and I'll begin with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures for this item.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Griffith, I met with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, met with the applicant's representative and drive past there every day.
Commissioner Wiskey, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, too, for Washoe County Planning Commission, will ask for disclosures.
I have none, Madam Chair.
I have no disclosures.
I have no disclosures, except for I drive occasionally by the site.
Commissioner Chesney, I have no disclosure.
Commissioner Chesney, I also have no disclosures.
Mr. Barnes, no disclosures.
Commissioner Bruce, I drove by. That's it.
Thank you. And I'll just use this juncture just to remind both Commissions, if I could, just to state your name when you're speaking, so we get the record accurate as possible.
And speak into the microphone, please.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Michelle. So I do not have any requests to speak forums on this item. Does anyone wish to make a comment on this one?
Got one coming down.
One coming down. Got stalled out there. All right. Danny was ready to jump up. It's yours. Here we go. Danny Kleas.
Danny Kleas, for the record. I suggest all you guys go see that property because it's on a hill. And at the bottom of one of those properties is a retention pond. It's for Walmart's, or Walgreens' retention, water coming off their property. This shouldn't be commercial, not whatsoever, because you've got to take down half the hill to flatten it out, for one. How far does this have to go before something actually happens and gets done? It shouldn't be rezoned, should stay the way it is. They're going to take open space away, even if it's five feet. That's a no-no. Everybody knows it. Leave it alone. Sorry they made a bad investment. Go somewhere else. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Other requests to speak on this item? Okay, and if you could please fill out a request to speak form when you're done, we'd appreciate it.
Rob Sheesh, for the record. You guys have all driven by that property, but have you tried to make a left to go into Walgreens, which is on the same facility? Have you tried pulling back out on Lemon Drive? It's impossible. There's so many accidents that were there when that Walgreens first started for traffic trying to turn left into Walgreens and come out and exit. There's no turn lane for this commercial property. So you're impacting trucks, trailers, and everything else that's going to the backside of Lemon Valley to try and make a left where there's no left-turn lane. You're adding more congestion to an existing problem. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other requests to speak on this item? Seeing none, I am going to close public comments and bring it back to both Commissions for questions of the applicant, applicant's representative, staff. Who'd like to begin? Commissioner Hawkins.
For the record, Commissioner Hawkins, my question to staff is, are we just looking at this to clean things up according to our master plan and what they are now?
That's partially the reason, Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner. That's partially the reason. The zoning currently is arterial commercial on a portion of the site. That does not match with the underlying designation that currently exists on the property. So by changing to general commercial, that, those two commercial, the zoning designation and the land use designation would therefore be consistent with each other. The other thing is getting a open space designation that matches the contours on the property better. That's one of the reasons, so we can protect those 30% slopes as well.
Thank you. Let you call out here.
Washoe County Commission, any questions? Commissioner Lawson.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Lawson, for staff, you're talking about open space matching the contours, and yet what I'm seeing is a reduction in the open space that's allowable. So right now, it appears to me that the open space is greater than you need for the slope preservation. Is that incorrect?
So this is the existing land use designation on the site. And so not only does it not match our existing zoning line where the large lot residential 2.5 is, it doesn't necessarily come all the way down to the southern half of the site when it comes to the slopes. So it's not actually protecting the whole entire slope there. So by realigning it, it actually better conforms to the contours and actually protects the entire slope that's right there, at least the portion that's 30% or greater.
Commissioner Marshall.
Commissioner Marshall, for Jeff again, I guess, I understand it's matching the contours, but why the need for the reduction?
So the existing land use designation, or the existing zoning designation that's on the site, there's an already existing land use, or line there. And so basically, this would be matching that existing line. So that way, it makes the process through the zoning map amendment a little bit more clean and streamlined, so we don't have to go through and remap everything.
Commissioner Marshall.
I'm actually Commissioner Olivas. You took my name. Jeff, can I? Is this an intensification?
This is an intensification of the existing land use designation.
And can you explain why?
Sorry, sorry.
Can you explain why that is?
So the existing land use designation has a low-density suburban rural designation, residential designation. So let me put this back up again here. That light pink color right there, that's low-density suburban rural residential. So that's a very low, dense designation. And by putting a commercial designation on it, it does increase that. However, the existing zoning on the property is arterial commercial. So if somebody wanted to build something on there, they would already be able to under our existing zoning.
Could you build residential on those parcels given the existing zoning?
With the existing zoning on a portion of that, yes, you can build residential, and there's no density cap in arterial commercial. There is a portion on the backside of the site that does have large lot residential, so it does get a little weird on how it's split zoned right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Doncheck.
Yes, Commissioner Doncheck, for the record. Jeff? I heard one of the concerns being that there is, it is a very sloped area right in there now, and it's, but you're going to, only the area that's in the, that you intend to be open space. So what is the gradients as you come down off that property? And how much, I know there's no actual plan at this point, but how much grading would you have to do? What does that movement, earth movement involve impact?
So the existing slopes up here would be protected, and they would have to grade into the specific area in order to accommodate some sort of commercial development. So that's the special use permit that's been submitted at this point.
And since we're all concerned about water and flooding, how, I drive by there, but I don't know, where does the water, how does the water come off into that area? Where does it channel?
You know, that's something that we would have to analyze as part of that special use permit project. That's not, that's not what's under consideration today with the master plan amendment.
Thank you for that clarification.
If I may, Commissioner Chavillacheck, the designation map that you had, the other, the other map. So in that map, what you're, the existing one, I'm sorry. Thank you. In the one, the one that's the light pink on Sky Vista Parkway and Buck Drive is currently the Walgreens.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
So why does it not have a commercial designation?
That's a great question. I have no idea. I have no idea. That was something that happened prior to that, the existing underlying zoning there, prior to this amendment. The existing zoning there is arterial commercial. So when the Walgreens came in, it met all the arterial commercial standards. So there is an inconsistency between those two designations.
So it wasn't converted to commercial?
Yes.
And then earlier, we had a question about traffic. So how is traffic going to be managed through this? Because right now, the only way you could access this is through Walgreens parking lot.
Yes, so I can turn that over to our engineer who's here and have her answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer, for the record. So currently, as it stands, I believe out there, it's a double yellow, so no left turns are actually supposed to occur, but they are. In something with a project to come forward, we could require a traffic study. It would depend on what that project coming forward looks like, and it would be analyzed then of what could be done. But as of now, that double yellow is supposed to restrict those left turns.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you. Can I, Jeff, ask you to come back up just for a couple of clarifications, please? This is a master plan amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no project associated with it. It is just a designation for future projects.
That is correct. There is a special use permit that has been submitted and that will come before the Reno Planning Commission at a later date.
Okay, so the special use permit for whatever it is that is being, going to be proposed to be built there will come before us, and at least the City of Reno Planning Commission will have an opportunity to review it as a project.
That is correct. And because this is an amendment to the Reno-Stud Corridor Joint Plan, that requires approval from both Commissions, from Washoe County and from the City of Reno. However, once the project comes through, it would just require City of Reno Planning Commission approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall.
Jeff, why, why is this amendment necessary if the property to the south was able to develop commercially? What's the need for this amendment? Aside from bookkeeping.
So with regards to this amendment, as you can see, the dark red right here is the arterial commercial, existing arterial commercial zoning designation. On the property located directly to the south, almost the entire property falls within that arterial commercial zoning designation. This portion of the property right here falls under large lot residential 1. So the applicant came in with a zoning map amendment request to change that large lot residential to arterial commercial and to change this LLR 2.5 to open space. And so, once we looked into the existing land use designations under the Reno-Stud Corridor Joint Plan, we realized those would be inconsistent, so that they had to come back and do an amendment to that joint plan in order for them to process that zoning map amendment to change this right here to arterial commercial and this right here to open space.
So really, the key thing here is getting rid of the LL, large lot residential to facilitate a commercial project.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huran.
Thank you. Commissioner Huran for staff. So it sounds like, you know, and we've seen this before, that this is a master plan amendment for a project-specific thing.
Not necessarily. That is what.
Well, you can color it any way you want, but it's very project-specific.
I, I think, well, you could, they could go away and somebody else could come onto this site. The difficulty is with the way that the large lot residential is organized now, you wouldn't realistically have a house that's built on this, on a hill where that large lot residential is located. And so you could better use the site with arterial commercial to be consistent with the adjacent commercial all around, and then preserve the hill slope under open space. So it has nothing to do necessarily with the project. Yes, are they going through with this with the intention that they want to build a bank? Yes, absolutely. But if the bank goes away, the site can still be going forward with some sort of special use permit.
But, but we wouldn't be here if there wasn't this project that was ready to go.
I mean, the landowner could have came in and requested that, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Lawson.
With respect to traffic generation. Yeah, Commissioner Lawson. With respect to traffic generation, if you're going to put a bank in there as opposed to two homes, what's the difference in trips?
I, Shawnee Denigan, Associate Civil Engineer, for the record, I do not have those trip generation numbers, as that wasn't required with this analysis. That'll be analyzed with the SEP process.
Thank you. So if I might comment?
If, Commissioner Lawson, if I could.
Yes.
Chairwoman, if there are no other questions, we can move into discussion. And I think we're just about at that point, Commissioner Lawson, if there aren't any other questions. So why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's problematic to me that we seek these zoning changes in advance of special use permits, in advance of an applicant doing a study. And it seems to me that the result continues to be building opportunity for increased traffic congestion, increased flooding potential, deterioration of existing communities incrementally without adequate information. And I, for one, am, have seen enough of it. And so with my, my personal views are this, that we ought to have a lot better information available before we engage in decisions that could affect the community potentially in a negative manner. My two cents.
Okay, thank you. Now, okay, now, public comment is one thing with the applause. When we're in discussion as a commission, I'm going to have to ask the audience to respect that, to get through these items efficiently, okay? Okay. Other discussion? Commissioner Marshall.
So tonight, we have two items on our agenda that are both for zoning intensifications in the North Valleys. Next week, we have an agenda item.
Next week, we have an agenda item that we specifically asked for relating to sewer capacity and potential in the North Valleys. I am disturbed that we're having to make these decisions on these intensifications prior to the point when we're having that much, you know, repeatedly requested presentation. I would much rather have that presentation first before having to make a decision on a up or down on these particular items, because I think that's incredibly relevant to both these items. We may have to deal with them serially, but they both present the same issue as to what is our capacity in the North Valleys to intensify zoning that's going to lead to additional sewer effluent and, you know, obviously we can talk about other issues, but that's the main one that's currently on our agenda for next week. I'd, I'd like for us to talk about whether or not it's appropriate this time to hear this, this application. There's other issues with this application that make it difficult for me, but I don't know whether or not we should do up or down on this application at this time, given what's coming to us next, you know, right next week. Thank you.
Commissioner Griffith.
Commissioner Griffith for the record. I will echo Commissioner Marshall, but, I'm sorry. Just, we're tasked with certain items this evening and we do have an over umbrella of items that we've seen and particularly the discussion that we'll have next week. So I'm just, I would like to echo what you mentioned as far as what we're tasked with, which is these zoning items instead of what information we have for next week, which could potentially really impact our decision this evening, so.
Other discussion items. Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I guess when I look at this in totality, I look, there's no house, house going in that large lot residential. It's just not going to happen on the hill and right there with the intersection. It's probably a good place for, for a project like this. I guess my concerns are with trade-offs that have previously been made. It was mentioned about the road being a reason for the need for the change. Well, whoever owned the land previously made that decision and put the road in. So I don't buy that as a rationale to change the zoning. And open space, particularly when I look at the, the finding for the, for the planning commission bears relation to the planning of the city. And one of the big things we've been talking about through our master plan update is, is encouraging open space. And this isn't a regional park. This isn't high quality open space. It's not. But I have a real problem and can't make the finding and when I look at trade-offs that have been made in the past and now they want to convert open space into something more commercial, that, I, I just can't make the finding that that's part, part of, bears relation to our planning.
Okay. Commissioner Huran.
There's so many hands, that's okay.
Commissioner Huran. I, I echo a little bit of Commissioner Lawson's comment that as, you know, and what I get very concerned about is that we're making master plan amendments and changes for project specific things. And it's, it's like a death by a thousand cuts. And I just, I have a real concern about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Huran. Commissioner Doncheck, did you have a comment?
Just in general that I'm very, very concerned about the traffic issues in there. It's, it's not safe now and I know making amendment changes, and I know that traffic is part of, to the next project, but I think we need to be, in a lot of cases, we need to go before, solve issues before we make plans and changes to the impact of the people that are already there.
Commissioner Chesney.
Commissioner Chesney, Washoe County.
I think you turned your microphone off.
Pardon?
I think you turned your microphone off. Oh, it's on. Okay.
I, I echo Commissioner Marshall and Huran's feelings myself. And the comment, death by a thousand cuts, is exactly what we're, we're perpetrating out there in that valley. And these one-on master plan amendments are just killing the purpose of a master plan. And I, I, from what I see right now, I can't support it.
Other comments, discussion, reactions? Commissioner, or, Sevillec.
Commissioner Gowan. It's, it's okay. The area that causes me the most trouble is that the, where the, where the Walgreen property is right now is not zoned commercial. And I, I too echo my fellow City of Reno Planning Commissioner that we have a responsibility to protect open space where it is. And when you see natural stone cuts like this, they deserve to be part of the view shed. And so moving forward with a problematic designation where a commercial property already exists but hasn't been changed to commercial is very troubling.
Jeff, you ready to jump in?
Yeah. The, the property where the Walgreens is and where the subject site is, is zoned commercial. It has commercial zoning. We're, we're requesting a change to the master plan amendment so that the zoning and the master plan amendment are consistent. That's, that's what we're here for tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I would disagree with that, Commissioner Marshall. We are not here because the zoning is inconsistent. We're here to change zoning to facilitate-
We're here to change, change the master plan.
The master plan to facilitate a project that allows additional commercial development within that area that wouldn't otherwise occur without the, these amendments. As, I think that's where we got last, when we talked just a minute ago, right? It's getting rid of the large lot residential.
This is the portion in question here. Right here. That's the only portion that would change as part of that zoning map amendment that would come back before the City of Reno Planning Commission. Tonight, all that's being requested is to change this portion right here and this portion right here. The open space piece in question.
I'm sorry, could you do that again with a finer pointer?
Sorry.
No, no, just do the same thing. These space, but take the top off your pen and point out specifically.
This space right here, that is what's going to general commercial. So let's put these side by side here. This portion right here is the only portion that is not remaining open space. This small little spot. So that's the only small reduction. Instead, we're bringing open space down to match the contours of the existing slope so that it's protected. Then when the zoning map amendment comes in, that will then match that designation. So that LLR 2.5 on the far east side of the site would be changed to open space.
So we're doing this through three steps?
Three different steps. This joint commission is only responsible for the master plan amendment. But in order for a zone change to happen, you have to have a consistent master plan amendment.
Thank you, Jeff.
Misseners, other discussion and reaction to that clarification? If not, I'd certainly entertain a motion from the Reno City Planning Commission. Do you want to try your commission?
Certainly. I'll entertain a motion from the Washoe County Planning Commission of either approval or denial.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I might?
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes. I move to deny.
We, you need to, because we have a recording secretary that's unfamiliar with Washoe County planning members.
Sorry, Commissioner Bruce, second.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Edwards.
I hear the motion is to deny. I would ask that there be some discussion of findings or a statement of findings as to that motion before there's a vote on it.
Yes, I was going to ask for the same. Commissioner Lawson, we do need to, in terms of denial, you need to designate where you cannot find finding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for my ignorance of the process. I don't have a proposed amendment for denial, so I'm just going to wing it. I do not find that this motion is in the general interest and health of the, health of the general public. I do not find it is consistent with the, the concept of retention of open space. And for those reasons, I motion to deny. Is that, if that's sufficient? I don't know.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson. I think what the Washoe County Planning Commission is used to seeing is that we have appro, we have a proposed motion. And that is, and I think that's what Commissioner Lawson is referring to, is that's not present in this packet, so.
Madam Chair. If I could interject, I could add some categories to-
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm trying. It blows up in my face every time I do it.
Is this counsel for-
Oh, sorry. Nate Edwards, District Attorney's Office. And the findings, Commissioner Lawson, are consistency with master plan, compatible land uses, response to changed conditions, availability of facilities, and desired, desired pattern of growth.
May I, Madam Chair, Mike Lawson for the record? Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I find it inconsistent with the pattern of growth.
And for Washoe County, your motion is on page two, where it says, "Proposed Reno Planning Commission motion" and then "Proposed Washoe County Planning Commission motion." And Commissioner Bruce, with Commissioner Lawson's changes to that, his original motion, do you continue with the second to that motion?
I do.
Okay, Washoe County Planning Commission, I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lawson.
I vote to approve the denial.
You vote to deny.
I vote to deny.
Commissioner Huran.
I vote to deny.
Commissioner Doncheck.
I vote to deny.
And I too vote to deny. Commissioner Chesney.
Vote to deny.
Commissioner Barnes.
Vote to deny.
Commissioner Bruce.
Vote to deny.
Thank you. It's a unanimous vote for denial.
Reno City Planning Commission, I'll ask again for a motion. If there's no motion, discussion. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 18-00026, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the proposed amendment to the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan by resolution and recommend that the City Council do the same, subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Agency.
Have a motion? I have a second?
Commissioner Griffith, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, Commissioner Marshall, discussion?
I'll be voting against the motion primarily based on the reduction in open space, the fact that it is, I find it to be inconsistent with the direction of our new general plan in terms of being able to provide intensified uses consistent with available resources and services.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
So let the record show that five in favor with Commissioner Olivas and Marshall opposed to the motion. So the motion carries for Reno Planning Commission. Okay. So we move on then to item 4.2. If I could ask legal counsel for input on reading in the appeal process? Do we need to do that?
Yeah, you can go ahead and read that.
Okay.
It's, it's just gonna, it's gonna be a recommendation.
Right.
So both the approval and the denial, the recommendations, so no, you don't have to read the appeal process. And it's simply a recommendation. So it'll go up to the Reno City Council and to the Washoe County Commission.
Either way.
As a matter of course, yes.
Okay. So do I need to read that then? Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on then to item 4.2, which is case number LDC 17-00043, Etcheverria Peavine Property. And we will begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. My name's Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the Etcheverria family. What we have before you tonight is, includes two parcels totaling about 560 acres, owned by the Etcheverria family. It's been in the family since the 1970s. They've been in the community for many generations and, and have developed successful projects just to the north of this. The Petco development that's built out there was originally Etcheverria, Etcheverria project. The property is located just to the south of US 395, right at the Red Rock Road interchange. Consists of two parcels. One parcel on the north side is approximately 159 acres, just on the north side of the Union and Pacific Railroad spur there. And the south parcel is approximately 400 acres. This property, these properties were annexed into the City of Reno in 2009. The existing master plan in this area, it is in the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. The joint plan utilizes county land uses and City of Reno zoning. So it adds kind of a level of complexity. This area in particular, the southern parcel is mostly all general rural, 421 acres of general rural. That allows for a maximum of 40 acre lots. And the northern portion there is predominantly made up of high density rural, two and a half acre lot minimums on about 441 acres. The, really, the reason that we are here tonight, just with the master plan amendment, we're not, you know, changing any zoning or anything like that at this point. Really, we're here because of the Reimagine Reno. Reimagine Reno and the Reno Planning Commission and City Council adopted a new master plan at the end of last year and was found in conformance with the regional plan just last month. So what happened during that process is in the joint plan area, they really didn't address any of the land uses. They, they effectively said, "We're just going to leave it as is. We're not going to address those areas." We believe in the Reimagine Reno master plan and we want to be a part of that. We think it's appropriate to have land use designations that are consistent with the city's new vision for the city. So the existing master plan designations that are in the corridor, or the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan are both inconsistent with the new Reimagine Reno master plan as well as the housing studies that supported that plan. This area in particular is changing, you'll note, to the north of this area here. It's largely developed in the City of Reno. There's a mix of commercial, residential, higher density residential, including apartments and multifamily. The existing zoning is LLR 2.5 on the north, consistent with the master planning right now. And on the south, really, there, there isn't a zoning designation for it. There's a hole in the zoning map. So this, again, leads to compatibility issues with the existing master plan and moving forward with any type of project in this area. I'll also point out some other inconsistencies. This is the zoning map now that we're looking at. The area just to the east of us there has zoning designations of commercial and industrial, although it has master plan designations in the joint plan of general rural. So there's, there's some significant inconsistencies that, that we would like to correct by moving forward with a Reimagine Reno-supported master plan. This, again, master plan does not change the zoning. Two different layers of land use controls in this. Any future zone changes or what we're anticipating to be a- Any future zone changes, or what we're anticipating to be a planned unit development in this area, would be, would require another process, very public process. Our proposed master plan amendment is one to remove this area from the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. It was originally adopted in 1996. It was then updated most recently in 2010. So the, the plan itself is over 22 years old, and, and largely, the city of Reno has, has developed and built out their portions of the plan, and, and really, I think it's a time to, to look at sunsetting that plan, and that is something that was discussed in Reimagine Reno. This will allow, this, the changes that we're proposing will allow the property to support the goals and policies that are in Reimagine Reno, the new ma, master plan, and I also want to note, this area is in an area of cooperative planning. So even though we are taking this out of the joint plan, or proposing to take it out of the joint plan, it, it still would be subject to cooperative planning. That cooperative planning process will require that, in the future, with anything we do, whether we rezonate or, or any, any other projects, we would be coming to, the county would have opportunities to review it, and we would be presenting this to your Citizens' Advisory Board. When we look at the site suitability for this property, over 77% of, of the site has slopes less than 15%, which is identified in, in the city's code as being most suitable slopes for development. There are a couple different major drainage ways that cross the property that we are preserving as open space. There is existing infrastructure within the vicinity that would need to be extended to serve the property that is appropriate. Water is located in North Virginia Street, just to the east of us, near Sted Boulevard, and sewer service is currently in Red Rock Road towards Moya Boulevard. Again, this, this area is, is an area that's changing. You can see the growth that's happened to the north of us. The zone changes to the east of us to commercial and industrial. Really, this is a, a time when the pattern in this area has changed that would support this, this change now. So what we have proposed is largely single-family neighborhood on 67% of the site, about 373 acres. That single-family neighborhood, again, is a Reimagine Reno designation. It allows two to eight dwelling units per acre. Then we have proposed suburban mixed use on 145 acres on the north side. That allows for a mix of low to moderate-density residential, as well, as well as some commercial and office-type uses. The suburban mixed use really gets to the heart of some of the, the aspects of Reimagine Reno, and especially the housing study, where we're able to provide a mix of housing products to better support the growing population and diversify our housing stock that's really necessary, not only in the North Valleys, but throughout the city of Reno. We then have 40 acres of parks, greenways, and open space, and that's concentrated along those major drainage ways. There is an existing, there are existing commercial uses in this area. The Sierra Safari Zoo is just to the north of us. They, you know, proclaim to be the biggest zoo in, in, in the state of Nevada, so that is a rather high-intensity commercial use just to the north of us. Some of the community benefits, this helps support the city of Reno's housing study that, that educated the Reimagine Reno process. It creates for an opportunity for a mix of densities and housing types to support our growing population. It provides opportunities to introduce more affordable housing types, so providing more single-family attached, multifamily, that would be supported in that suburban mixed use area. The Reimagine Reno master plan identifies opportunities for creating vibrant neighborhoods and centers that have mixes of housing types, mixed-use development, and neighborhood amenities, and the, these master plan designations support all of that. Other community benefits, while this request does not include a project at this time, we do look at what potential impacts there could be for, in this particular case, traffic. We look at it very hypothetically, just to understand what we can anticipate with a future project. So in, in particular, we looked at a number of intersections. Traffic Works provided a traffic study for us. We anticipate in the future, we will need to have certain mitigations with a project, and, and again, very hypothetical and to be determined, but those may include widening the North Virginia Street, improving and basically completing the south side of the Red Rock Road interchange, and, as well as some signalization in that area probably, and then also crossing the Union Pacific Railroad track with either an under and overcrossing, something that was identified by Washoe County Engineering as, as a, a big positive to increase access to, on this side increases safety and, and accessibility. Our future plans, we anticipate a planned unit development here. It, it has a large enough critical mass of acreage at 560 acres to really justify a planned unit development. With that, we'll be able to address really specific design-related comments, as far as, you know, buffering of uses, controlling the, the types of uses that go in certain areas of this property. I'll mention again, this was, this is going to be subject to cooperative planning in the future, and so we will have a, a joint process of sorts. It will look different, obviously, than, than what this is tonight, but we will be at both the Neighborhood Advisory Board for the city and the Citizens Advisory Board for the county. The project will go to county staff for commenting. And then one last thing, with a project of this size, i- it is going to be a project of regional significance. The thresholds are relatively low for a project of this size, or this acreage. So being that it will be a project of regional significance, there will be an added level of scrutiny, if you will, with, you know, a, a planned unit development in the future, to where the county and city, Reno and Sparks, will all have an opportunity to weigh in on this project in the future. With that, I would close my comments. I'll reserve the remainder of my time, Mr. Chairman, to rebut any public comment and provide more comment, if you will.
Okay. Thank you very much. Turn it over at this point to city Reno staff, and Heather, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioner members. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. The applicant did a great job explaining what the nature of the request is this evening before you, and I did want to follow up with some additional items that were included in the staff report, but I also wanted to call them out. I did receive two phone calls from folks who had received postcards regarding the request. Their, their comments were very general, just wondering how it may impact their personal property taxes on their properties. Otherwise, I didn't receive any other comments for or against the, the request that's before you this evening. In your staff report, there were some concerns that were raised by the Neighborhood Advisory Board and from citizen input that had to do with compatibility, wildlife management, and, and mitigation to the impacts for wildlife, supporting infrastructure and services related to development, industrial adjacent to residential uses. With this request, originally, when it went to, when the application came forward initially, there was a portion of the land, about 78 acres, that was proposed to be industrial. Through work from, with the applicant and staff, you have a revised plan before you this evening that does not include any industrial properties. Staff had worked with the applicant. Because there is residential surrounding the site, we did have some concerns with locating industrial directly adjacent to those residences. Traffic concerns were also noted, and energy-efficient design was another comment that we received. All of those are really project-specific concerns, and before you this evening is a master plan amendment, one to, to remove this 560-acre site from the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan, and then, two, to re-designate that land to City of Reno, Reimagine Reno, master plan designations of suburban mixed use on that northern portion, and a single-family neighborhood on the southern portion. As the applicant mentioned, there will be a need for a zoning map amendment in the future, whether that would be to align with City of Reno zoning designations, or to request for a planned unit development is still, at this time, uncertain because we don't have that request before us. But in any event, we do not have a development proposed at this time. All of the above items, the, the concerns that have been raised, will be addressed during the zoning map amendment and development proposal stage, should this master plan amendment be approved. Regardless of what happens, a zoning map amendment would first need to take place because it is zoned large lot residential and general rural, and in addition to that, the Planning Commission would see future requests for either a special use permit, a planned unit development, or tentative maps for whatever development would occur. And staff would address all of the facility services and, and impact issues at that time developments proposed. We did receive one public comment, letter that did state that their preference would have been to have seen industrial adjacent to their property. Warehouse distribution, distribution industrial uses do tend to have a little bit less impact than some other developments that may occur on, in other zoning districts, and larger lots, if approved, would be promoted and desirable along the, the edges where existing county properties currently exist and are developed. This did go before the NAB and CAB, and one comment was received that stated that the requested land use did provide for density that was more intense than what they thought was appropriate for the area. The staff is recommending approval of the master plan request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Heather. This is a public hearing item, so again, if you have a request to speak for him, please fill that out. Before we get to the public hearing portion, I'm gonna ask the city of Reno Planning Commissioners for disclosures on this item, and I'll start with Commissioner Wyskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site. I received and read a couple of emails and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Griffith, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site, received emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Thank you.
I too will ask for disclosures from Washoe County Commissioners. Commissioner Bruce.
I visited the site area.
Commissioner Barnes.
Commissioner Barnes, no disclosures.
Commissioner Chesney.
Commissioner Chesney, no disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Hand, no, no, oops, sorry.
Commissioner Doncheck.
Mr. Doncheck, I have been by the property. I have to admit, I am acquaintance with the Etcheverria family due to the, our closeness to the Golden Valley pit. I did receive an email, but I did not make any further comment.
Commissioner Hurren.
Commissioner Hurren, no disclosures.
Commissioner Bruce.
Commissioner Lawson.
Commissioner Lawson, I'm sorry.
I'm not as good-looking as Commissioner Bruce. Yes, Madam Chair, I have disclosures. I visited the site. I was approached by the applicant to meet, and on the advice of counsel, declined.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Nate Edwards, District Attorney's Office. I had a couple of follow-up questions for Commissioner Doncheck. You mentioned briefly that you have a knowledge of, or acquaintanceship, or friendship, something along those lines, with the Etcheverria family?
I'm acquaintance with them, as I'm the current president of the Golden Valley Property Owners Association, so we have worked with them regarding the Golden Valley pit reviews.
Okay. And that's, that's a separate project and development than this?
Yes.
And so, is that the extent of your acquaintanceship with them?
Yes.
Does that lead you to be unable to be impartial during these proceedings tonight?
No, sir.
Have you made any commitments as to the outcome to the Etcheverria family, based on your acquaintanceship?
No, sir.
It all happened, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we will open up public comment, and again, be respectful of the speakers. We can hold the applause, that would be appreciated. I understand it's a, you know, emotionally charged issue, so we'll move on into public comment. Donell O'Neil, please, followed by Jean Harris. And if you could state your name when you get up there, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Donell O'Neil. I live on Peavine Mountain. This is, let's see, that's my parcel right there. This is where their land is coming up on my parcel.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
You can take it with you.
I have horses. I have animals. I mean, they're moving in on my land, infrastructure, traffic, the freeways, the side streets, all of it. There's only two access points into town, the 395, two lanes, or Old North Virginia. It's one lane, so if they start this and that's not done, then we're all in trouble. If it snows, people get off on Old North Virginia, and it takes two hours to get to town. You can't get to town already. We have flooding issues. I'm gonna be at the bottom of this hill now. I'm gonna be in the flood zone. That's what's gonna happen. I watched all these people from Lemon Valley talk, and all I can think is, oh my gosh, that's gonna be me. We have a small valley, noise pollution, the freeway going through, it echoes all the way through there. We don't have the dispersment for all the, the pollution that's gonna come and sit in that little area right there. We have very little amenities. We have very little gas stations, restaurants, all of those things, they're not out there. They can't handle the demand. You're taking away our rural integrity. The school zoning, what's gonna happen with that? It's already a mess right now, buses and kids, cold springs, North Valleys, I mean, and then city and county borders. They're talking about bringing it into the city, but I'm still county. I'm not changing. I'm staying county. That's what I am. I don't have to change. So, and what about future fiscal costs? Police, fires, schools, damage to the roads, public transportation. Has anybody tried to take public transportation in the North Valleys? There's like a bus line that runs. That's it. The overcrowding, this is for everybody in the North Valleys, our quality of life. They're overcrowding. There's already multiple large projects that are on the plate. They just approved Stone Gate, 5,000 homes, okay? So let's say, that's four miles from my house. 5,000 homes, and there's at least probably two people, if not more, per home. You're talking 10,000 more people, and then they wanna put in all these other people. Behind me, in that MDS or SMU, they wanna put townhomes behind my home. That's what they showed me at the neighborhood. So they wanna put a townhome between, be, behind my horse property with my animals. I mean, I just don't understand it. It's not helping with affordable housing. Those homes are not gonna be cheap. And the crime, we don't have crime out there hardly at all where we live, on the hill. It's gonna bring all this crime up on that hill. Our habitat, our wildlife, I've even read where they're wanting, the city council wants to send all the strip clubs out to the North Valleys. That's a great selling point, right? Oh, come by in the North Valleys, by the way, we sent all the strip clubs out there for ya. And then to me and my family, my water, my well, they strip that land, where's that water gonna come from?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Harris, followed by Danny Kleas, please.
My name is Jean Harris. I own a three-acre parcel adjoining the Etcheverria Peavine Project. It remains in Washoe County. I am not here to address the impact of growth in the North Valleys. That's being covered by many North Valley residents, nor am I speaking about the proposed City of Reno zoning on this property. I am here to support the amendment to remove all acreage from the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. Because this property has been annexed by the city of Reno, the removal from the joint plan is merely a formality. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Kleas, followed by John Wagner.
Danny Kleas, for the record. Unlike Jean, I think it needs to stay the way it is. That way, we get all of you in here. We get to yell at you all, just not one, just not one person, or the five, or the seven. We get you all. Somewhere, it has to stop. All these developers and landowners, and I've met with them, I've been to their stuff, I've been to the NAB meetings. They're nice people, but you buy 40-acre parcels on a mountain, you leave it that way. One house per 40. They're talking about what Reno-Stead area did. That's a mess. I really appreciate that, too. I don't know too much else to say, is, again, look at the North Valleys master plan for Washoe County. Something else you guys ought to think about is the land, lands bill that Washoe County is trying to pass. That thing's a joke. If that gets passed, that means you'll have millions of people coming here, clogging up my backyard, my front yard, my side yard, and my other side yard. That one's not gonna fly, so it doesn't give Washoe County the power to do what these developers, what these landowners wanna do right now. what these landowners want to do right now. It's pretty sad when you hear residents complain more than once. And I know you guys hear me a lot, saying the same thing over and over and over. Now we have a whole room of people saying the same thing. Why don't you do infill before outfield, like everybody is supposed to do? If you look at the surveys that have been taken online for regional, Washoe County, infrastructure first, then build, you don't put the cart before the horse. Unfortunately, the City of Reno and Washoe County, they put the cart before the horse a lot. It's time to change it. And I know in the workshop that we had, we talked about wildlife. That's a perfect example. When I went to one of their plan holdings, all they talked about was mountain lions. It's going to be really interesting when you get city folk up there and not know what to do. That has to be looked at, so I hope you guys consider that. But most of all, I'd like to see all of you next time when this property comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jana Wagner, followed by Russ Earl, please.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Wagner, and first of all, thank you for being here and listening to me tonight. I am one of the residents of what is currently designated as Anderson Acres. So the first speaker, Donnell, I am actually one of her neighbors right in front of her. I am here to object to the proposed rezoning of these properties. The rezoning proposal increases the housing density by up to 7,700 percent, based off of its current, you know, the current houses that are currently zoned for that area. There's one road designated for these neighborhoods to go in and out. You know, 3,000 homes, up to 3,000 homes, and that's just the single-family residential on one road going past my home with my children. As you've already heard tonight, I don't need to really repeat it, you know, there's issues with the traffic and everything. My concern is that this does not fall in line with the Reimagine Reno master plan. The designation for our neighborhood for this area is a foothill neighborhood. And according to Reimagine Reno, this neighborhood is valued for its access to the outdoors and the recreational amenities. It has special considerations that, with the transition of the unincorporated county and open spaces. And the current proposal effectively takes a city neighborhood, which would be either a central or even an outer neighborhood, and plops it right in the middle of my backyard, right in the middle of my neighbors' backyards. I understand the need for housing. I understand that there's going to be a growth, but I don't see the variety of homes, the variety of lots, that the Reimagine Reno plan is, you know, had designated wanting. I see a lot of high-density homes, the multifamily homes. I see a lot of the single-family neighborhoods, but I don't see a lot of the large-lot neighborhoods, and that's what makes our neighborhood so unique and so specific. When my husband and I bought our property, we wanted to have land. We have friends who wanted to have land. And my husband and I feel very fortunate that we were even able to get an acre. When we bought our home three years ago, it was the only one-acre parcel we could find. And the next parcel in size was one-third of an acre. So, you know, you want to have the variety of the homes, but there's, the plans that is proposed here, it doesn't have that. You're planning for people to come in into these little neighborhoods, but what about the people who want to urban homestead? What about the people who want to own horses, you know, the people who are outdoor enthusiasts, the recreationalists? Like I said, I'm in favor of development, but, you know, responsible development, development that works with the current neighborhoods, which works with our lifestyle of being in the country and the county living, to not be congested, to not have, you know, buildings right up against us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Russ Earl, followed by Tammy Holdstill.
Good evening. Russ Earl, for the record, representing myself as a Silver Knolls resident. I don't even know where to start with this plan as to how ill-advised it is. First off, with up to eight units per acre on the southern section, on the upper portion on Peavine Mountain, that's a pristine mountain. From a fire perspective, we have prevailing winds from the west and southwest, so you're putting your highest density where your beginnings of your fire front are going to come from. That's just poor planning. Going on to other things, if we extrapolated their low end of putting in approximately 1,360 homes, if we compare it to the Silver Hills plan with 2,340, their traffic study showed 19,000 vehicle trips per day for Silver Hills. So if we go in the low end with their plan of 1,360, that's 59 percent. That would be 11,000 vehicle trips per day in and out of that development. We can't handle it. There's just no way. As I said previously, get NDOT to give us a in-stone. When is that going to be fixed for 395 and the spaghetti bowl? Water and sewer, again, we've already gone over that. Stormwater runoff, when you pave and build over that much area, there's no infiltration, so it's just going to run off quickly. All that water is going straight to Silver Lake. We've already got homes in Silver Knolls, on Osage Road, that literally still have water up to their back doors right now. When this family built the Petco project, they took out about 12 and a half acres of area for wetland, and they were supposed to mitigate that on the eastern side of that. Well, a lot of that has now, through sedimentation, has filled back up. So we've lost somewhere between 60 and 80 acre feet of storage in that lake already from a previous project from this family. I say no to taking this out of the joint plan. Those of us in the county that are right on the edge of that and just to the north of it, we're highly impacted by this. We need all of your voices in this plan. What I'm seeing is, what it's currently zoned at and what they're requesting, it's two sides of the pendulum. There is more responsible ways to come up with a plan for this property. They own it. They have the responsibility and the ability to develop it. But let's develop it responsibly. If it went to something like LLR 2.5, where we had larger lots, that would be more in tune with what the character of the area is, that would be much better. They also spoke about the growth just to the north. That growth occurred in 2003 to 2005, when all those homes were put in. The only other growth that's occurred there since then was the Petco warehouse that they put in approximately three years ago. Other than that, there has been no growth in that general area. With that, please look and do things in the responsible nature. This plan should be tabled and reworked until it's more responsible and more with the rural area out there, and keep it in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Holdstill, followed by Sue Carpenter.
Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley-Swan Lake Recovery Committee, which most of you know who I am. I am against this plan right now. There are many reasons. I think you guys all know them, but we'll go over them again. First of all, Silver Lake, as he stated, is flooding. It floods, and when it drains, it drains to Swan Lake, okay? So that affects Lemon Valley. You're adding more congestion in an area that doesn't need it. You're adding more traffic in an area that doesn't need it. You are not following your master plan. You are not following what the zone codes are already there. How many times do you put zoning in a specific area, and then somebody comes along and says, "Well, it doesn't pencil out for us this way, so let's, I want to change it, and I want to double it so that I can make the money off of it." Well, you know, making money is great, but if they're speculating, they're speculating. And it sounds like for me, I've never met the people, but if they're not taking care of their water mitigation that they had promised previously, what's to say they're going to do the right thing now? There is a lot to look at. There's no reason, when there's 74,000 homes already in the works between the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County, 74,000 units, why do we need another 3,000? Can anybody answer that question? I know that we don't have the water for it, and I know for the fact that Tomah did something that they shouldn't have done, that I have brought to everybody's attention, that back in 1999, USGS, federal EPA, told Washoe County not to inject in the Lemon Valley area, and it's done anyway since 2010. And they're doing it in the Silver Knolls area, not doing the science. The science has not been done to know where those aquifers go, how they fill up the area, and banking water for development so that you can say, "We have the water"? Come on. You don't have the water whenever you're flooding other residents out in the process. I don't think I have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Carpenter, followed by Danielle Oliveri.
Hi, my name is Sue Carpenter, and I've never spoken in public like this before, and this is the first time I've attended a meeting, so I'll try not to pass out on you guys. I'm a fairly new resident to Nevada. I moved here from San Diego, California, five years ago, and immediately bought an old house on some land off Peavine Peak because I was really tired of what had happened to California and all the stuff overbuilding it has done. Unfortunately, in the five years I've been here, oh my God, it has become California. And the same thing is starting as such as, the roads are not adequate, everything is not adequate, but the housing goes in. And I'm basically here to say, be careful with what you're asking for here with all the development, because it didn't work out too well there. The gentleman for this fire, I've been through a lot of fires in San Diego County, and I thought we had winds. Oh, hell, no. We do not have winds down there compared to here. I have been literally 80 miles an hour coming off Peavine Peak, and my first thought was, oh my God, if they got a fire going here, it would completely wipe things out before it got it. So all I'm asking is people to understand everything that's been said here, I truly feel could happen. This water coming off those very steep hills coming down, there's got to go somewhere. And obviously, when you cover over area, it lets for less percolation in. And I'm so nervous now, I can't speak, so thank you very much.
You're doing fine. Thank you. Danielle Oliveri, followed by Nikki Simpson.
Hi, Danielle Oliveri. So my problem with this is, if approved, the proposed amendment would remove, would redesignate it to only the City of Reno. My problem with that is, is it doesn't really seem like the City of Reno cares about their people out in the north valleys. I'm sure you disagree. I would hope you would disagree. However, I can't help but to think that we're about to be in a deja vu setting in 10 years, where we have the City of Reno, who has now approved all of this development, and the county who's going to be stuck holding the bag for a whole bunch of residents who are flooded. If you're looking at Silver Lake to Swan Lake, and you look at the pictures that the gentleman put up, and the amount of acreage, the 540 acres compared to Silver Lake, it is astounding. And they are right on top of each other, and that all leads down into Swan Lake. I'm a resident on Pompey. I bought my house three years ago. Obviously, the biggest investment I've ever had. It's the only stick-built home on my street. I have flood insurance. I have flood damage, and I can't do anything with it. I would hate to see other people in my position who forked out all of their life savings to buy a house on a dry lake bed that never had water in it. I've been a Lemon Valley, I've been a resident my whole life, same with my husband. And the fact that they want to put it only into the City of Reno's hands says a lot about the City of Reno, if you ask me. And it says a lot about the developers and where they're going with it. They know that City of Reno, they can probably get more done. There's more mouths to feed for the City of Reno than there are for the county. I think the county has done the best that they can do, and it's really scary that they're trying to push it just to go to City of Reno only. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Simpson, followed by Scott Burner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for listening to all of us from the north valleys area. I think I speak for almost everybody here. We do appreciate it. I've lived up in the north valleys areas for the last 20 years, and I'm going to oppose this project, but not exactly for some of the reasons why everybody would think. The fact that there's going to be one house per eighth-acre parcel up above me, between me and the fire zone, because Peavine is struck every year, is great. Not going to hit my property, hit theirs first. The fact that they have to build infrastructure to keep water from running off that mountain, down through the gullies, and flooding out places till it ends up filling the lake, it's not a problem for me. It's only, you know, only going to help me. The fact that my property value is going to rise, that doesn't bother me. What bothers me is, I would dare any one of you to live a week up there and try to commute into Reno at 8:00 AM in the morning. It's a 40-minute drive for 10 miles. Now, we can talk about the improvements they're discussing at Red Rock and North Virginia. That's great. I'd, you know, love that. What are they going to do with 395? When all of the people filter down into that two-lane highway and hit North McCarren, and there's one person on the side of the road changing his tire, that traffic stops. And it doesn't stop for five minutes. It stops for 40 minutes. So it'd almost be easier for me if I want to continue working to move south. Like I said, I'm not going to oppose it because you're going to raise my property values, or you're going to give me better fire protection. I'm going to oppose it because you're not ready. That road is not ready for those people to be funneling into Reno. And almost everybody that lives up there is going to be working in Reno. That needs to be fixed first. Two-and-a-half-acre parcels, even better, as far as congestion, I think most people that are in this room would say, we might consider settling for that, but one house per one-eighth acre parcel on the base of Peavine is not a very smart move. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Burner.
Good evening, Washoe County Council, Reno City Council. Last time I was here, it was nine or 10, and it was on this Etcheverria project. I wasn't in favor. I wasn't against it. I just wanted to see that it was researched, and if anything was going to be planned, it was done in a proper fashion, because like many of my neighbors here have said, you put a curb and gutter neighborhood above us, we're going to be washed into Silver Lake. My closest neighbor, in between Joe O'Neal's and myself, he had two weeks of end dumps, bringing material in for the natural runoff, which he is on the edge of behind Safari Zoo, which Etcheverria's man brought forward, but those maps shows what is happening in a normal time. I live to the west of Sierra Safari Zoo, and there's a dry creek bed. Only twice I've seen it run as a river. I can hear rocks rolling inside my house, and that's in a natural formation. You do a curb and gutter, the runoff will damage every person's home down there, some more than others. Not to mention the access, as everybody said, there's only Marmak and Lenko. I was not against or for this project, and I'm very familiar with the Etcheverias, the family, and also the Stonegate, Jack Bacon, you know, all these old... I'm an old-time native Renoite, and I bought my house 23 years ago. And somebody built this one, Joe O'Neal's house was built, there was another one, and I have no problem with progress. When this first came up, the person that takes care of this property for Etcheverria is a good friend of mine. is a good friend of mine. I've had access to this property for twenty years. It's my front yard. There's nothing in between my front door and the top of Peavine except this property. Two-point-five for houses, ranch-type, horse-type properties is what they said they wanted to do. Nobody ever said they wanted to do eight or multifamily, a little bit of commercial in one spot, which was really sad, because it was going to affect people along, I can't remember, Copperfield. And the biggest thing is, there's just no way this place can handle that kind of population. There's fourteen cars driving in and out of there a day. You put fourteen hundred, a little, fourteen thousand, it's done. I can walk to work on snow days quicker than I drive.
Thank you. Michael Welling.
Good evening again, Michael Welling, North Valleys resident. Recently, we adopted the city of Reno master plan, and the biggest thing was that they consistently said they wanted infill before outfill. Unfortunately, we continually come to these meetings, and it's about outfill, not infill. So on the master plan, on page ten, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, it says, "When considering a major amendment to the master plan, the following criteria should be evaluated: consistent with the overall intent of the master plan, based on changed conditions, proposed amendments are compatible with surrounding areas, strict adherence to current goals and policies of the master plan, proposed amendments will not have a negative effect on adjacent properties or on transportation services and facilities. The proposed amendment will not cause detriment to public health, safety, general welfare of people of Reno. Unfortunately, now we have an air quality issue that's been brought to the forefront that we're going to have to deal with. We're in a basin, and the air is getting terrible." And this isn't something that's now just Nevada, it's in California, it's in Colorado, we have these issues. Furthermore, on page twenty-three, it says, "Looking to the future, the city will encourage growth that will support the quality of life residence, residents' desire," not the planning commission, "the residents." It will also be fiscally and environmentally responsible. The city will take a proactive approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Wagner. You're in opposition?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Yep, we've got one more. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and then, yep, thank you.
Sorry about that for the late delay.
Not a problem.
My name's Mike Coley. I'm a native Nevada, and I've lived in this area for all my sixty years. I lived in Verdai for forty-three years before moving to the North Valleys. I've been in the Hepner subdivision for fourteen years now. So I've seen development through my life between Reno and Verdai, Reno, Stead, to Cold Springs. And the thing that's bad is that the master plans that were developed by the CABs from the communities of Washoe County are fine. They were developed by the residents, and then it was, these areas were annexed to the city of Reno, and as soon as they're annexed to the city of Reno, it seems like it's fair game to do anything. It's almost like the county's rolling over on us. You know, in both areas, we have seen where they do this, they bring in developments, they say that, oh, we've got the property for fire stations, but we don't have the money to do the manpower just to man the stations. We don't have the water. Oh, we'll bring it in from Tomah, but guess what? We're throwing meters on your wells. And that was a proposal from the state, that they were talking about doing that, so that they can build more developments. The water is coming from Fish Springs, it's going to do a lot of these developments, it's coming down. Before we decide to change zoning and change it into the city of Reno, maybe the county ought to look at it and see what they're losing in benefits to them, benefits to their supporters that elect them, and just in general, just the welfare of the residents and the community. And North Valleys, Stead, Horizon Hills, all those up there, I mean, people go out there for a reason, because it's a rural environment. And what this proposal is, is ruining that. It has been ruined for a long time, because look at the traffic that is coming down 395. And you guys do not do anything about the infrastructure before you change the zoning, because once it's changed, it's fair game. Oh, well, we're zoned for it, we can do it. So please, think about it before you do change this. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last request to speak for him. Do we have anyone else wishing to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to both commissions for If you'd like to start us off. Commissioner Hawkins.
Andy, please. During your statement, you indicated the sewer was going to go down in the Red Rock area. I'd like you to clarify that, because I've been doing this for quite a bit of years. So inform me that there's another sewer plant in Red Rock, and I'll sign the paper right away, but all I can see is Lemon Valley.
No, sorry. For the record, Andy Durling Wood Rogers, sorry, no, the sewer treatment plant would be the Stead treatment plant. What I was referring to is the nearest connection point is in Red Rock Road near Moya. So the sewer main sewer pipes in the road that we would be connecting to is in close proximity.
And if this goes forward, are we going to leave anybody in an island, Washoe County specifically? Are there going to be any islands there?
No, no islands. This, again, going back, this, you know, kind of a little bit of the history, this was annexed back in 2009. So the annexation is done. This is in the city of Reno. This is under the city of Reno's purview for any future development. This is really step one in a multi-step process for the future development of this property. Right now, we're kind of at the very high, you know, thirty-thousand-foot level with the master plan. But no, the annexation happened almost ten years ago.
No. Andy, you know what we went through for Stonegate? I can see visions of that happening again in the future.
Understood. And that's where, you know, there is no project at this point, right? This is just the master planning process. Because of the joint plan, we kind of have to start here and have this discussion, have this process. Upon approval, hopefully tonight, that moves us into, you know, kind of the next phase of our planning, where we can, you know, really get to some of the specifics and some of the things that, you know, the folks brought up tonight, whether it's fire service, drainage, sewer improvements, water, things like that, all get really dealt with at that next stage with the planned unit development.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Griffith.
Commissioner Griffith, for the record. Heather, can I snag you? Hi. So we've heard a lot about the, how we're trying to match this to the Reimagine Reno. And can you just talk me through how staff felt that this was the progress in the process forward of making this better match the Reimagine Reno?
Sure. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, and I may utilize our planning manager's expertise as well. But when evaluating the new master plan, there were a lot of policies, goals, and guiding principles that were outlined in the staff report, and we could go over those if you like, if you have specific questions about any of those. In addition to that, the site is within a cooperative planning area. And so one of the, I think, one of the goals of the joint plan was really to offer up that coordinated effort and to mitigate and address concerns of that urban interface with Washoe County properties and residences. And so with cooperative planning, those policies that are adopted as a part of the city of Reno code do require that lot matching or large open space buffers be provided between existing residential properties and future development. And a lot of the comments that were received tonight with regard to compatibility are elements that the cooperative planning ordinance does further assist to address. In addition to that, cooperative planning code requires specific lighting standards, as well as some other specific design standards that aren't necessarily applicable within the city's urban core. And so with the combination of the policies that we identified in the staff report, as well as it being a cooperative planning area, staff did feel that the concerns related to the compatibility of a future project could be met with the proposed master plan designation, and that the request was consistent with the master plan.
And then one more follow-up question. One of the biggest things I pointed out or highlighted in here was the public safety concerns for the timing for police and also fire. Just for clarification, is the area currently being met with fire and police? I know that they said they wanted to increase to to eleven officers of police, but right now, are they having, I mean, we were looking at thirteen minutes, I think, for fire response? So I'm just curious, do we know what the current time is?
So the fire department did provide comments on this, and they did say the closest fire station to this site is the one in Stead. And the response time is about ten minutes to thirteen minutes if you go to the farthest southern edge of this property.
Right.
And so currently today, there is not, it is not within the service time goal that the fire department has established. So we do anticipate that, much like other projects that have come before you recently, that those items would need to be addressed before any development could be approved to occur here.
Okay. So that is current, like, that's what's currently is happening, is the ten to thirteen minutes?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? While Heather's there. Commissioner Woski. Heather, if, as you just stated, the cooperative planning is a good thing, then why do we want, why is it a good thing to ask Washoe County Commission to be removed, I mean, Planning Commission to be removed from this planning effort?
So as the applicant stated a little earlier, the difficulties arise when trying to apply the Joint Corridor Plan policies to city of Reno zoning. It adds a little bit of complexity in addition to that.
But it's already annexed into the city of Reno, right?
That's correct.
So it's governed by the city of Reno ordinances, correct, and zoning?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's a matter of explaining to seven planning commissioners what our ordinances and our zoning is, and that's difficult?
No, I think the application of the translation between the corridor plan and the city of Reno zoning can be difficult. And in addition to that, a lot of the Reimagine Reno guiding principles, goals, and policies did work to encompass and incorporate a lot of those policies that are contained in the Joint Corridor Master Plan.
Okay. I mean, I just don't get what, why the applicant is having a problem being able to explain that or staff supporting that if, and Andy was my next question, I mean, where's the difficulty here?
And I can let the applicant answer that question for you.
Okay.
Sure. So confusion arises, right, when this is Washoe County land uses and city of Reno zoning. And with the city of Reno now adopting a new master plan, Reimagine Reno after twenty years, that further exacerbates that problem, right? So we cannot apply the new Reimagine Reno land use designations to this property, because we are hamstrung by the current joint plan. The joint plan does not support those land use designations. So getting to the point of trying to implement the Reimagine Reno master plan is, the joint plan is an impediment to doing that. So that's really the crux of why we want out of the joint plan, so that we can actively plan this property in the context of Reimagine Reno.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Andy. And Heather.
If I could jump in really quickly here. Claudia Hansen, planning manager, going back to Commissioner Griffith's question on fire services. Chief Cochran was double-booked tonight, so we're filling in for him tonight. But he just wanted it on the record that we have with the Stonegate project, which was brought up, I think, by Commissioner Hawkins. As you know, there is a fire station required with the development of Stonegate. We're not looking for a fire station in each one. We can't man two stations, and it's not needed for this area. So one or the other, or another solution, regionalization, something, some other solution, but we are not looking for two stations to fully man in this area. It'd be one station or regionalization. So I just want to get that on the record for Chief Cochran.
Commissioner Gowan. Commissioner Chavalechek for the record. For the applicant's representative, please. In this day and age of planning and the integrity of planning, is it not possible to use the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan and amend it in such a way that we can have the two entities involved to develop the property in a manageable, steward opportunity that takes into consideration the area plans that surround this entire property, which are Washoe County area plans? And I find it highly offensive that you say to me, as the chair of the Washoe County Planning Commission, that I am not able to adapt or understand city of Reno planning. And when you say that the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan is irrelevant and needs to be sunsetted, I too take exception to that.
Madam Chair, if my words were taken that way, I apologize. That is not the intent. My, our stance is that the designations that are now incorporated into Reimagine Reno, which is the new governing document for the city of Reno at large, are not, don't translate into the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. There aren't compatible land use designations that can get to serving the housing studies and the other elements of the Reimagine Reno plan that we're trying to accomplish. And so the suburban mixed use really is kind of the crux of it, right? That designation is very flexible and allows for a number of mix of uses that aren't supported in other designations. It would be sort of a patchwork quilt if we were trying to apply the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan designations to this area. This is an appropriate planning process. This is getting us a next step forward so that we can engage in a very meaningful conversation about what the future development of this property can be. You mentioned too about removing you from the process. That is not the case.
But you did say that this is subject to cooperative planning, but it is not subject to cooperative decision-making.
Well, it is on some level.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Once, if this is approved this evening, and the Washoe County Planning Commission agrees to remove this property from the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan, we no longer have a voice.
So your voice is in the master planning process? So you have a voice tonight? And the next steps, you'll still have a voice. Because this project is subject to cooperative planning, that process includes the county, both county staff, as well as a requirement for us to go to the Citizens Advisory Board. Now, we wouldn't be coming to the Planning Commission. That's correct.
That's what I'm getting at. So it is not subject to cooperative decision-making at this level?
Let me finish. It is, because, because a project of this size of 560 acres, and because we are planning to do a planned unit development, and you know what? We can commit to doing a planned unit development, that will be a project of regional significance. And because it's a project of regional significance, that gets elevated to the Regional Planning Commission, of which the Washoe County Planning Commission has three seats on that board. So you still have input into the process.
Thank you. Commissioner Haran.
Just a clarification for either chairman. You know, the question is, we're hearing a lot of different things, but the question to vote on tonight is whether it's a part of, or we still have the say at the table. I mean, that's what we're talking about tonight, not fire, not any of this other stuff. Am I wrong or right on that?
So it's my understanding, Commissioner Haran, that the Washoe County Planning Commission has one has one decision to make, and that is to keep or remove from the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. The Reno City Planning Commission has two, the first one and the second one is the master plan designation, so.
I just wanted to make sure that I was listening to the right things.
And Commissioner Haran, I also confirmed with planning staff and planning council that our decision is either removal or maintain in the Reno-Stead. Then we'll go to Commissioner Doncic.
Okay, Commissioner Mars. Battling it over, forcing who's going to go first. Heather, can I ask some questions, please? You know, it just kind of occurred to me as we're hearing testimony and talking, do you know just very round numbers, the percentage of actual residents north of, you know, within the North Valleys that are, live within the City of Reno, or in other words, occupied dwellings that are actually within the City of Reno versus the percentage of the population that are in the county?
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, I don't have that information as far as the broader northern, North Valleys. Directly adjacent to the north side of the freeway is City of Reno, and so that was developed and incorporated into the City of Reno. But beyond, I'm sorry, I don't have the percentages of Washoe County residences versus City of Reno.
Okay. Did you do any analysis of the, excuse me, let me back up and give you the context. The, one of the major thrusts of our new regional plan is to locate housing close to jobs. Did you do any analysis that indicates the type of jobs that are available in North Valleys and the salaries of people that those types of workers make in comparison to the types of single-family development that's on the majority of this property? Do you have anything that we can link those two things up to say, yes, this area will be providing housing for jobs that are available in North Valleys? Or is it really, are we really, in the crux of the question, are we really seeing most of those homes providing housing to people who are working south?
Sure, again, Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the record. So within this request of the 560 acres, a portion of that is about 373 acres is proposed for a single-family with a density range of two to eight dwelling units per acre. And again, this is a master plan amendment, so we don't have a specific development before us today. But, and the other aspect of this request is that suburban mixed use designation, which if we weren't talking planned unit development, but just straight City of Reno zoning designations, that would include a lot of appropriate commercial zoning designations as well as residential. So there are opportunities within the site itself to provide for jobs, housing balance. And that's what city staff was really looking at with this request specifically.
Yes, Commissioner Doncic, for the record, just a couple of things. I'm looking at the report, I have grave concerns over the safety and health issues regarding the fire department not saying they can't respond and there's no plan for a station. We have problems out there now with response, because some areas have piped water and some of us don't, and they don't know where they're responding. And then, of course, the police department, again, says they have great concerns over being able to respond in a proper, in proper time, that they're not well-staffed with that. And again, I have to admit that I feel that I'm at loss, because you keep talking about the reimagined Reno master plan, which I have never seen or been given, so I can understand when you're asking questions about it. I'm at a loss, because I don't know what you're referring to. So that kind of puts me kind of outside of what's in the packet a little bit. I don't know what's good or what's bad, because I don't have all the facts. So I have a problem with that. Can you, how long did you take for this plan, and what was your process for this?
So if I can help address one of your questions, with regard to the Washoe County Planning Commission, as Chair Tavilochek mentioned before, Washoe County Planning Commission is really considering tonight specifically whether or not to remove the site from the joint corridor plan. And with regard to the reimagined Reno plan, I understand it's a newly adopted document that the Reno Planning Commission and City Council has been working through about a two-year process from beginning to adoption on that. So you're right, there's a lot of information we're discussing tonight that, I apologize, you're not familiar with. But tonight, for the Washoe County Planning Commission, is purely, is it appropriate to remove this property from this corridor plan at this time?
Thank you, Heather, but by not understanding what you're saying, you want to change it to, and the reason you're changing it is the reimagined, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with what you're asking me to do, is what I'm saying.
And I'm not sure if you saw it, but we did provide a link to the reimagined Reno master plan document for those who didn't have a paper copy available.
Mr. Marshall.
Heather, implementation 2.4E, which I think you cited in your staff report from reimagined Reno, talks about initiate discussions with regional partners regarding joint planning areas and explore sunsetting their Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan. I kind of feel like we're putting a bit the cart before the horse, we're taking out a huge area of undeveloped property within the, before we're even initiating discussions, or have discussions already been initiated with Washoe County and other regional partners about whether we should sunset the plan, or are we really kind of affecting that policy by effectively withdrawing 500-plus of the undeveloped acres within the plan?
I think if you give me one moment, I'm going to look back, I just saw Sienna, who worked on the master plan, walk in, and I think that would be best addressed by her.
Thank you, Sienna Reed, for the record, Senior Planner with the City of Reno. Just in terms of a little bit of background on the conversations that took place as part of the master plan update process on the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan, what we had were general discussions with residents, the development community, other planning staffs, and there's a general agreement that, you know, the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan was adopted some time ago now. The City of Reno has annexed just about all of the land contained within that planning area. And that plan was really meant to help establish a framework for land use at a time when the City of Reno had an expanded sphere of influence, when it hadn't necessarily gone forth and annexed all lands just yet. So there's been some general staff-level discussions, there would certainly be a lot more conversations about the joint planning area being potentially removed. That's something that can only be done through the regional plan process, because that's where that boundary is set. But it's something that the planning staffs of Reno and Washoe County would like to explore. We've definitely heard feedback from the development community that they would like to explore that. And as Heather alluded to, and as you can find in your staff report, there is a lot of, or a lot of policies that do align with the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan in our new updated master plan. Certainly in terms of what do you do when you have, you know, steep slopes, drainage ways, you know, really those kind of hillside considerations that need to be taken into account. There's a lot of conservation policies in the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan, a lot of compatibility policies in the Reno-Stead Corridor Plan. We have a lot of that that's carried through to our foothill neighborhood designation in the new master plan. So I think you've heard a lot of kind of discussion tonight on, are the new policies adequate to cover this area? That's a discussion for these two, your two bodies to have tonight. But if you do have additional kind of specific questions on some of the policies in the master plan, I am happy to go into those further in more detail.
While you're up there, Heather, can I, may I continue?
Sienna, yeah.
I'm sorry, Sienna.
Sorry.
Can, I posed a question to Heather about the consistency of the primary zoning for the property being single-family, and the compatibility of that type of zoning with, excuse me, master planning, with the type of jobs that we see in North Valleys? Have we done, you know, with our various housing shortages, et cetera, is it, is that the appropriate type of zoning to match up with, to make it a jobs, housing balance in the North Valleys? Or, you know, can you shed some light on that type of zoning to service that population?
Yeah, so, you know, in terms of the proposed land use designation change, that's a policy decision that the Reno Planning Commission would be weighing in on tonight. So from a staff perspective, what we've done is provide in your staff report an analysis of the proposed land use designations. So kind of north of the railroad, you have the suburban mixed use master plan land use designation, and south, you have the single-family neighborhood designation. That single-family neighborhood designation is predominantly meant to encompass detached single-family on relatively, you know, moderate density-sized lots, they might be clustered in a foothill setting to help avoid undue disturbances to sensitive natural features. And so that is a housing product that we do have a fair bit of planned in the City of Reno, but it does need to be considered in the context of the suburban mixed use master plan land use designation as well, and then the natural features where it's proposed. So you do have the suburban mixed use designation that, as was previously explained, does allow for a variety of uses, higher-density residential uses of up to about 30 dwelling units an acre, as well as commercial uses. And then, you know, that single-family neighborhood area, in addition to the open space areas along the drainage ways and steep slopes, has been applied in the context of the foothill neighborhoods, really trying to understand where are the most appropriate areas for development and what type of development might be able to best adapt to some of those sensitive features. And I think, you know, all of the commissioners here, whether Reno or Washoe County, know that home sites are a little bit easier to cite, especially when you can cluster than, say, a larger apartment building or commercial development. So that has gone into consideration in the proposed assignment of the master plan land use designations, and it is your policy purview to make a recommendation to council on those designations tonight.
Commissioner Bruce.
I just had some comments. One, I'm very reluctant to amend the master plans, because unlike the United States Constitution, once a master plan is amended, it's amended forever. And in this particular case, I don't find that this, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies and action programs of the master plan. As far as a compatible land use, I don't find it compatible with existing or planned adjacent land uses, and I believe it will adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Further, as to responding to change conditions, yes, the conditions are changing, but this appears to be at best an over-response. As far as availability of facilities, I seriously question that in terms of affluence and fire and police safety. And finally, an item, the desired pattern of growth, apparently we're being asked to vote on the orderly physical growth of the city and guided development of the city when we represent the county. I can't find that it...
Commissioner Bruce, if I may?
Does that for the county, and I'm done.
Okay. Just reminding the Washoe County Commission, the action that we are taking this evening is to vote yes or no for removal from the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan.
Yes, those conditions are part of the proposal.
Commissioner Bruce, this is Commissioner Gower, those are the findings that the Reno City Council has to make for the master plan amendment request. So those are in the staff report, but for the Washoe County Planning Commission, those aren't findings that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel or staff, but I don't believe you need to make those findings.
On page 4.2A, it starts out with the Washoe County letterhead, and it goes, whereas in accordance, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, and it gets down to Washoe County Code Section Master Plan Amendment Findings. And it's to be signed by the Washoe County Planning Commission Chair, as well as attested by Trevor Lloyd, the Secretary.
I think legal counsel's going to weigh in.
Yeah, I'll weigh in real quickly. Nate Edwards at the District Attorney's Office. It is sort of an interesting question, because the vote of the County Planning Commission is actually to remove it from the plan, so it seems a little bit counterintuitive to make findings that it's consonant with that master plan, yet you're removing it. However, that's sort of the imperfect scenario that we find ourselves in, so the County Planning Commission would need to make the findings to support its action to remove it from the plan. And I think the inference from that finding would be that it's more appropriate to be simply in the city's master plan, based on circumstances and things of that nature. So it's a fair question, and the question makes sense. The County Planning Commission does need to make those findings to avoid being arbitrary and capricious.
So, Mr. Edwards, if I may, so then, what I asked you earlier, so Commissioner Bruce then is, can, as Washoe County takes action, then we need to find findings or not find findings for removal? Or staying within the plan?
Yes, and as I hear Commissioner Bruce's comments, I think he's explaining why he's not in favor of this, or does not believe it's appropriate for it to be removed from the joint plan. That's how I'm hearing his comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we kind of waded into discussion, but I wanted to make sure that there weren't any other questions for staff or the applicant before we do get into discussion. Commissioner Hawkins, question?
I'm just waiting for discussion.
You're ready for discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson, I do actually have a question. Just to put everybody else on hold briefly, sorry. Heather, real quick, we heard the applicant, I think correctly indicate that their concern with the joint plan is that there's not a land use in that that is comparable to the suburban mixed use. Is that a fair statement in terms of what I've heard? I'm looking at the image that we have in our packet here for the joint corridor plan with the planned use. And I guess what I'm, my question is, there seems to be a couple of density levels for suburban residential, both medium density and high density, and then general, commercial, and industrial. Can you explain to me maybe, and I guess I'm going to ask you to put this in the context for the discussion that we're looking at here, of the new, you know, the reimagined Reno master plan that has these different entities? What, where's the, where's the jump here? I mean, is there something, this high-density suburban, if I'm reading it right, is three to seven dwelling units per acre, and then there's nothing higher density than that in the plan?
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, yes, that's correct. From a residential standpoint, the single-family neighborhood is pretty comparable to the high-density suburban you just mentioned, the density range is very close. But there is not, the suburban mixed use does have a different character than the land uses that are available within the joint corridor plan.
So if I'm looking at the land use designations that are proposed, that were provided to us for the suburban mixed use, that includes such things as arterial commercial, community commercial, but also we get into multifamily, multifamily 30. So that's, just to understand the distinction, when the applicant says there's not something currently in the plan, and that's why they want out, I'm correct that the next thing would be this general commercial, which would be what it would have to be rezoned to in the joint use plan in order to accommodate a multifamily or the joint use plan in order to accommodate a multifamily or higher-density situation?
Yeah, I may turn it over to the applicant, but I also did want to clarify with the suburban mixed-use, yes, you're right, there's a variety of non-residential zones that would be allowed under that category. There isn't, however, a minimum density requirement for that zone, so while MF-30 is one of the zones that's identified as appropriate, there is no minimum density required in suburban mixed-use. And I will turn it over to the applicant to further answer your question.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Andy, so before you jump in, just make sure I phrase that question correctly, that the main reason, and I'm just trying to understand the question that's before both of these boards, is getting out of the plan is being requested because there's not currently a designation in there that's in keeping with what the applicant would like to do on the property?
Yes, absolutely. You hit the nail on the head. The suburban mixed-use gives us that flexibility to address the other things in Reimagined Reno that, especially in the housing element, when we really get to those goals of providing a further mix of housing products, so it's not just, you know, some, single-family detached, you know, 6,000-square-foot lots, we can provide a full spectrum using that suburban mixed-use. It can be townhomes, it can be small-lot, single-family, it can be apartments, as you mentioned, or multifamily. So, it really gets to the crux of being able to have flexibility in these larger developments to provide a full spectrum of housing, so that we can address what the housing study identified as a missing middle of housing products, where we don't have that now attainable housing product to make it more affordable for our working families.
Okay, so then that brings up the next question, because what you're pointing out, I guess then, is a question that goes back all the way to the development of this plan, which means that it, basically, at no point in time in the development of this corridor plan, was there an anticipation of this particular type of product occurring out there?
There certainly was not an anticipation of mix of uses.
Okay, so then, if I was to maybe ask the question for the county commission, what is the process, and this may be better for staff, if, in keeping their involvement in this from the beginning, what is the process to amend the existing said joint corridor plan to allow for a type of use that the applicant is looking for? Is that a process?
Maybe, I will defer to staff, but I mean, that, yes, there is a process. It's a lengthy one, and that's kind of part of the difficulty with the joint plan, too, is, you know, any changes, anything that we contemplate, you know, we have to convene a body of the joint plan, and it's, it's been six months in the making, and it was three months to get to the CAB-NAB, you know, it's, it's a difficult and arduous process.
And I think, based on the feedback that we're getting from the audience here, the process should be arduous because there are a number of questions that need to be asked. I guess my question in looking at this is that, you know, the whole issue of what is being proposed here in terms of the use that's out there is one that, based on what's being proposed here, is being taken away from half of the people that are on, that are seated here. Because what's being asked for is a change to a type of development out there that was not originally anticipated and currently, with a few minor exceptions, doesn't exist. And I think part of the struggle is that to now apply the new, which I, obviously, we're familiar with the Reimagined Reno, we're familiar with what the attempt to do is out there, and I think the question is, is that appropriate? And that's the questions that are coming out here, and based on taking it out of the corridor plan, not everyone can weigh in on that.
So, so just maybe to correct one point you made, and that is, to say that, that the types of housing products that we're talking about, kind of, again, to maybe just call it the missing middle of, you know, higher-density, single-family detached to multifamily, kind of that missing part of our housing product, it, it does exist in the Reno-Stead, in the Stead area, okay, and let me put it that way, but not necessarily in the Reno-Stead corridor joint plan. So, they're two different things, right? There are areas of the North Valleys that are not in the Reno-Stead corridor joint plan, they're in the city of Reno, they're zoned in the city of Reno, and master planned in the city of Reno. You guys made decisions on those, and, and they're part of Reimagined Reno. That's kind of what we're asking, right, is to take that step, because the city has gone through a process to update their master plan that was 20-plus years in the making, and it was a process that took over two years to do with a considerable amount of public outreach. We, we value that, right? As, as, as property owners in the city of Reno, we value that effort. And looking back at a joint plan that was originally done in 1996, fast forward to the early 2000s, then cooperative planning was introduced, right? So, in 1996, there wasn't a framework for cooperative planning. This sort of was the framework that came out of that. Now, we have a regional plan that dictates that we have to engage in cooperative planning in specific areas. That's not being removed. This is still going to be an area that is cooperatively planned between the county and the city.
I think that answers my questions. I appreciate that. Thank you, Andy. Mr. Chair, no further.
Okay, thank you. Other questions before we get to discussion? Commissioner Hawkins is ready to jump on me if we don't get to discussion.
Let's get to discussion.
All right. Commissioner Hawkins?
For the record, Commissioner Hawkins, I've been in that valley since 1968. I wrote a little something here. Because of the existing Washoe County residents play such an integral part of this proposed amendment, we need to stay in the joint plan together. It shouldn't be separated. We need, county, county needs us. That's the way I'm going. Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney?
I'm going to elevate this a little bit to like 30,000 feet. If you look at the regional plan and the regional plan study, today, this very day, we have, between Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County, approved but not yet built enough housing to accommodate growth for the next 20 years. And yet, I see, constantly see developers jumping on the bandwagon, trying to get these huge developments approved before the regional plan is going to be approved, hopefully by next year. And for that reason, I, I have a very uncomfortable feeling with the county really conceding any bit of influence that we can have on this Reno-Stead corridor, because after, after what's gone on up at Stonegate, it appears that, once the developers get in with the city of Reno, they develop with reckless abandon, and I can't support this.
Commissioner Moran?
I will echo Commissioner Chesney's concern. I think that there are, with no, no offense to city of Reno planners or anything, but I think that there are unintended consequences of, to Washoe County residents by us not staying a part of it. And I, I think that, you know, while we still have Washoe County, we still have a present on the regional committee, it's a much smaller oar, and I like to have a big oar in the water. When we talk about development on the North Valleys, there's, you know, I, there's a lot of talk about, you know, somebody mentioned earlier, the big M-word, moratorium, you know. I, I, you know, there's not a plan out there yet. There's infrastructure problems, there's flooding problems, there's not a plan yet, so I, I really want to stay a part of it.
You have two max here.
I just wanted on the record that I'm not anti-growth, I'm for smart growth, and right now, I am not comfortable with this because I'm very concerned about the Washoe County residents and the impacts, and I know it talks about buffering and light matching, but I, I'm out there, I live out in the North Valleys, so I'm one of those commissioners. And I go into the city of Reno, I drive in every day, and I'm telling you, I get stuck in the traffic, and so I'm very concerned about the traffic issues, and I'm sorry, I think we need to look at the total package and get some answers resolved before we put any more people out there. I can't go for it at this time.
Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to commend the applicant for your presentation and your thoughtful presentation, and staff for yours as well. I appreciate the effort that went into this whole thing. I echo the sentiments of the rest of the Washoe County Planning Commission. I have significant concerns over traffic congestion. I've spent a good four decades trying to bring more thoughtful process to the regional transportation system, and it's still lacking. The problems that Endon is trying to address with the spaghetti bowl are going to be inadequate under best attempts with the massive amounts of money to deal with existing congestion. We start adding 23,000 trips on, in this one project alone, that's the staff report told me, on the northern edge of that. We have a responsibility, as elected and appointed officials, to start addressing traffic concerns, flooding concerns, revenue concerns, lack of revenue concerns. The mechanisms that exist for funding transportation infrastructure are inadequate. We need to address that. The revenue generating mechanisms for water infrastructure are inadequate, the property tax structures are inadequate. We need to start having thoughtful conversations on how we're going to pay for these things before we keep building them. And so, for those reasons, I will be adamantly opposed to losing a voice in this process.
Commissioner Marshall, if there's no discussion over here?
I'd like to talk about both, for regional city council, both items, is that appropriate?
Please.
There, the impact of the city of Reno's development in the North Valleys falls almost exclusively on residents of the North Valleys. And it is, you know, and as a consequence of that, there isn't a, there's a disconnect between registered voters and policies that are being made that directly affect those citizens of the county, which we're all citizens of the county, that is, for me, very troubling. And so, I think on the first, first matter about whether to withdraw this acreage from the plan, I think we should, instead of acting or trying to get ourselves, as the city of Reno, into situations where we can act more unilaterally, that we should be focused on areas in which we can, we can act with our partners. I find that, I view this proposal as inconsistent with Regional Plan Implementation Policy 2.4E, and that I view that as, the first effort should be in discussion of whether or not that's a, the, this joint corridor plan is, remains viable, not to do it kind of through the back door by removing developable acreage from it. So, I find that as to that first question, we should be engaging consistently with our partners, and if that means a difficult process of amending the zoning to achieve our purposes and to implement our general regional plan, excuse me, our master plan, that we should take that route, rather than seek to avoid cooperating and directly participating with, with our joint partners. That leads me to the second issue before the Reno City Planning Commission, and that is, as to whether or not the master plan designation should change. We decide, when we make these, this kind of decision, we decide two things, whether or not the change is appropriate, and is it appropriate now? Those are both inherent in our decision-making. I can't find either one of those things with this proposal as it is now. I'd first like to talk about the timing. The timing, for me, is inconsistent for a number of the reasons that a lot of the, both commissioners, from both commissions, have talked about. It is intensifying zoning dramatically at a time and primarily with a product that is not needed at this point. It does not respond to what I perceive as the housing need within North Valleys, and so it is not supportive of the regional plan, excuse me, master plan notions of co-locating housing and jobs, as sort of a jobs balance. I also find it inconsistent with the provision of services. I mean, I think it's, you know, with North Valleys and this particular location, we don't have adequate services for sewer, transportation, traffic, fire, police, all the basic services. So, why intensify zoning at this time? Then, as to why intensify the zoning as it is, and I will frankly disagree with most of the audience members that want lesser density, I think we need greater density. For the city of Reno, we need products that fulfill a need, that match either the gaps that have been identified for us in our housing studies, and this doesn't do, this doesn't really step up to the plate, in my opinion. There will be a time when development on this area is appropriate, but it is, but it would be with a product that serves the residents of North Valleys, or expanding industries or commercial development in the North Valleys at some future point. But I can't see how, at this time, we should add to the, I wrote that down, Commissioner Chesney, how many, 20 years supply, and how many units?
According to the research done by the Regional Planning Authority, we have enough approved, approved but not yet built, which means all they have to do is go down and take out permits or file final plans to last us to 2032, I believe it is.
So, why are we putting ourselves through this at this time? Why are we creating the, the tension between the city of Reno and Washoe County at this time, given the facts that we have before us? And from my perspective, I just can't make the necessary findings to either approve the withdrawal of the area from the joint plan, than as to the master planning decision to undertake that at this time and in the manner that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Marshall and my fellow commissioners from both county and city. And in that, the city of Reno has two things to look at tonight. One is that Washoe County step back from this and future, and I am in agreement with you that you should not, and I would support you and hope that our motions are read in such a way that I, you will see my support. To the applicant, I, I disagree with what the proposed changes in the master plan are for future higher-density growth patterns. I, I don't, even if it were to go through today, I don't know that with bringing back individual maps or projects in the future, that they would get my vote in, on this project. So, I'm going to, depending how the city of Reno brings these motions forward, either as one or two separate motions, I'm prepared to vote denial on both of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieski. If I could ask legal counsel for a point of, point of order on the motions for the city of Reno Planning Commission, if, if the first item does not pass, does the second item become moot at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think you have to make two, two motions.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Commissioner Gallin, if I may. Commissioner Chivalecek, for the record. The Reno-Stead joint corridor plan was amended in 2010 for joint planning, and I believe that, that there is the opportunity to suggest to And I believe that, that there is the opportunity to suggest to you that this plan could be further amended to include compatible uses between the county and the city. And I thank my fellow commissioners, Washoe County and Regional, and many of us here this evening also sit on Regional. So we get the opportunity to interact with one another quite often, and this is a very collegial and professional commissions. And I applaud the commissions for that because in the past we have seen where that has not happened. So we're moving forward to maintain respect and dignity and demonstrate to the community that we can be respectful to one another and be in the best interest of the entire Washoe County. Thank you.
That's it. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, I'm not going to recap what everything is said, but I do want to touch on something that the applicant mentioned, and I don't disagree with it despite what my response may have been. I do think that if both commissions choose to continue to move forward with this, and granted, this is a limited area, I do think we should be also talking to staff about the fact that we should not, we should be doing everything within our power, even though it's a joint situation between the two commissions, to allow the process to be at the same speed it would be if it was one or the other. So I think, based on what I'm hearing, I think in the interest of this applicant and however many others there are out there, if this continues to be part of this, I would like to be part of the record that staff should do everything they can to make the timeline as efficient as possible in a situation like this.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I just asked Commissioner Gallin is in terms of the order, and then Mr. Edwards could weigh in on this if needed, is that the motion before the Washoe County Planning Commission is to up or down out of the Reno-Sted joint corridor? So is there, does it matter in order of who takes action first?
Yeah, I don't think it does, Madam Chair, and the county commit, or the county planning commission went first last time, maybe the city.
Okay, we can let the city of Reno go first this time.
Okay, city of Reno, looking for a motion. I've got Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Hawkins ready to jump in here.
I haven't done one before, so I want to get my feet.
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner Hawkins.
In the case of LDC 17-00043, I move to deny the request to amend the Reno-Sted corridor joint plan and to remain under joint jurisdiction.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Wieski, second.
I have my neck open.
All kinds of jumps in there. Discussion on the motions. This is Commissioner Gower, I want to make the comment that I wish we would have had this discussion on a similar project, a valley over, and as the one dissenting vote on that master plan amendment, I know you weren't there, Commissioner Marshall, I shared the similar feelings and comments on that, on that master plan amendment as I do tonight. So I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate having the county planning commission here tonight to share in the discussions. It's been a pleasure hearing all the discussion, so. Other discussion items before we move forward with the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that is a motion to not move forward with the removal.
Right, now we just indicate, Carl Hall, city attorney, that we would prepare a resolution and outline the reasons that the planning commission discussed for not removing the property from the joint corridor plan.
Thank you. Now, we have nays?
Commissioner Olivas, nay.
Thank you. So record shows six in favor, one against, motion carries. Commissioner Olivas, nay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallin. Commissioner Chivalec for the record, I'll entertain a motion from Washoe County Planning. Commissioner Chesney.
I move that we do not remove, do not remove the property from the joint planning area for Washoe County.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lawson, I second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Madam Chair, Nathan Edwards, DA's office. I would ask if the movement would indicate which findings he believes he can or cannot make.
You want the find, okay. I don't find it, it's compatible, under compatible land uses, I don't, I don't find that it's appropriate to meet the compatible land uses. I don't, I find that there's, even though they're, they may be planned for, there aren't available facilities to handle the change, and I don't believe that it meets the desired pattern of growth.
And on my second, what Larry said.
Any further discussion? I will take a roll call vote. I'll start with Commissioner Bruce.
Let's clarify, what's a yes or a no?
A yes that you're denying.
Yes that you're denying.
Yes, I'm denying, okay.
Commissioner Barnes.
Commissioner Barnes, yes.
Commissioner Chesney.
Yes.
Commissioner Chivalec is also a yes. Commissioner Doncheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Haran.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
We will move on, on our agenda then, to item number five, which is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do have a couple requests to speak forms. Remember, if you have a comment, please fill out a request to speak form.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's what you shall receive.
Danny Cleos, followed by Denise Ross, please.
Danny Cleos, for the record. I too wish that both commissions would be involved with more of the north valleys' development. It gives both sides a better representation. There's a lot of stuff that the city of Reno does that really does affect Washoe County residents. It's proof over the last two years. Besides that, I'll make this short, I thank you all. Hopefully, this will continue in the right way, so I don't have to worry anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise Ross.
Denise Ross, I just wanted to say thank you to you as well. I won't give you my lesson, but I was going to. We appreciate it, and we just hope that you'll continue to remember us in the flood zone out there in your decisions in the future. And when you talk about reimagining Reno, reimagine Reno without Danny Cleos at every single meeting. Thank you.
Wouldn't be the same. Carlos Archuleta.
I'd like to thank you for what you've done tonight, but I hope you have the same consideration when it comes to Golden Valley, because the same issues are facing us, and the water is going to go to Lemon Valley. So I'd like to thank you, and there are a lot of concerns in the valley, and I thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Any other requests to speak? Yes, they're coming.
Hello, I'm Betty Schmidt, and I just wanted to thank every one of you. It was really impressive, democracy in action. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Horvath, I'm also commending you all for the cooperation and willingness to listen to residents. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Other requests to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment and ask for a motion to adjourn the Reno City Planning Commission.
Commissioner Griffiths, move to adjourn.
I have a second.
Commissioner Johnson, I'll second.
All right, motion and second, all those in favor?
I will now ask for a motion to.
Motion.
Commissioner Doncheck.
May I finish? Okay. Commissioner Doncheck moved to adjourn, Commissioner Chesney seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.